Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the DICEART Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. So I will call the meeting to order, but I just want to wish all of you staff and council, I hope you had a great Thanksgiving weekend. It was beautiful up here in DICEART and hope we were able to somehow meet up with your friends and family and still enjoy a good Thanksgiving meal. So I'll call the meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk for roll call first.
Counselor Clark?
Present.
Counselor Donaldson?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Present.
Counselor McKechnie?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Wood Roberts?
Present.
Mayor Roberts?
And present.
Perfect.
Okay, so we will, I will need a resolution to adopt the agenda. Counselor Wood Roberts and Counselor Smith. Be it resolved that the agenda for the DICEART at all committee, the whole meeting held on October 13th, 2020 be approved as presented. All in favor? And that's carried. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or nature thereof? No, thumbs down, seeing that. We'll carry on. I need an adoption, or rather, a motion to adopt the minutes from the previous meeting. Which is the committee of the whole, I move by Counselor McKechnie and second by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Be it resolved that the September 8th, 2020 committee of the whole minutes be approved as circulated. All in favor? And that's carried. So we will start in with our different departments. So we're into planning, so we'll just wait a minute till our planning staff come into the meeting. We actually have our Director of Public Works in on the meeting as well. So when Jeff is on, I'm going to turn it over to him to explain. There's a lot of history in there about Rainbow Drive, a very short little section of road, but Jeff, I'll turn it over to you to start if that's okay.
Thank you and good morning, everybody. Yes, staff have received a request from the residents along Rainbow Drive, which is a road, private road in Harcourt to, for the municipality to assume winter maintenance of that road. Rainbow Drive and the six properties along Rainbow Drive were created by a series of consents and are subject to a severance agreement, which is registered on title to the subject lands. The severance agreement provides direction with regards to the ownership and the responsibility of the roadway, including that the roadway will be privately owned and maintained. It further notes that the assumption of the road will be at the sole discretion of the municipality or of council. Staff do have concerns with the request, specifically that the request did not come from, the road is actually privately owned and on a privately owned piece of land, and this request did not come from the property owners. So staff have concerns with that request. Staff have been in conversations with one of the property owners and up until recently, they actually thought that the roadway had previously been deeded to the municipality. I did take a look through the files and documents in the file appear to indicate that at one point, the road was, the intent was for the road to be conveyed to the municipality during the development. However, it appears there was a negotiation at the Planning Advisory Committee at the time of development and the development proceeded with the roadway as a private road. Staff also questioned whether the road can be brought to the necessary standards to be assumed into the municipal roadway. Staff have noted that they would need permission from council to investigate this matter further. So given the current request, I've given council or the committee, sorry, two options. The first one would be based on the severance agreement and the title of the lands. Council may simply choose to advise that this is a private matter, or based on their request, council could choose to assume winter maintenance of Rainbow Drive. I have provided resolutions for both the options and seek direction from the committee how to proceed. And I'm happy to answer any questions because I do know there is a lot of history here.
There will be. So Counselor Clark, before, I just want a clarification. You said the request did not come from the residents of Rainbow Drive, so in our agenda package, there is a something here dated September 29, 2020. These are not residents on Rainbow Drive?
Sorry, the request did come from the residents of Rainbow Drive, but the roadway is actually on a privately owned parcel.
Okay.
That roadway is owned by four private property owners and the request did not come from them. So we would be taking on assumption of someone, a road on someone's property without their permission. So that's why staff have concerns.
Thanks for the clarification. Do we want to hear from Rob Camelon first before we take questions from councillors? And just see what's been happening with snow plowing and winter maintenance up until now?
DICEART has not been snow plowing it. DICEART has not maintained the road at all. It's been treated solely as a private road. And as far as upgrading for assumption, we haven't looked at that only because we have not received a request from the owner.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Clark, do you want to answer your, or state your question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, there are a couple of things that are providing context for this I think need to be considered. We've got a lot of private roads in DICEART throughout Halliburton County and a request for the township to be assuming them is not uncommon. I guess my big concern is for this particular one. The zoning of the area, that type of thing, what I look at in terms of our responsibility as a council is to be building other settlement areas, not encouraging development in areas outside of what's been part of our plan for settlement areas. So we should be focusing any monies towards those that support the longer, more structured planning for us going forward. Not encouraging us picking up private roads that are outside of areas where we want to develop. So to you, Jeff, the zoning of these particular sites, is this, is there any, are they within a Harcourt settlement area or are they?
Yes, thank you, Larry. They are within the Harcourt settlement area or the Harcourt Village hamlet, sorry. Yeah, so they are within the hamlet.
So that could cause us more confusion. I guess this is the way I'm looking at this. On the one hand, I agree that, you know, we shouldn't be just arbitrarily going out and looking for roads to pick up and maintain. But on the other hand, we are also trying to encourage any kind of settlement in areas and provide infrastructure settlements within planned areas. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments or suggestions on the choice of the two resolutions that were included in our package? Counselor Donaldson and then Counselor McKechnie.
So there is a big history here and the person that has been snow plowing it for the last 30 years thought he owned it. And he come to me with all of his paperwork from the lawyer from 30 years ago. And that part was included, though the lawyer did not put it in on the final paperwork. So I feel like it was an error on the lawyer's side. And that's why it wasn't switched over to the person that thought he owned it for the last 30 years. But the other thing, which Rob will attest to, that on the survey, there is a turnaround for the snowplow, so it would be able to do. But in real life, it's not a turnaround, it's part of the baseball diamond. So that's one of the major things that, to bring it up to standards, it would have to take in part of the baseball diamond outfield. So I'm not sure, Jeff, if you've had any other, and the people that do own it don't think they own it either because they did the deal 30 years ago and they've never had a tax bill for it. So it is kind of a tricky thing. But Jeff, do you have any, like, a path of least resistance of how to get it all figured out on paper? So that maybe the four owners can get off of the land title and that the private properties all assume the road and that they look after it. Like, what's the, what's the yellow brick road to go down there?
So that they form a road association. So it's not still a municipal road, but the ownership goes into the other names. Part of the complication I see in this request is for that clarification that Jeff gave at the beginning is that the request is coming from the residents who access this, but not from the owner. So I think without further detail, we can't make any conversation with the owners. Like you said, there's, you know, there's more legal paperwork, but if we haven't been maintaining it for now, I would say we don't, which would be the first resolution choice there. But so Tammy, you asked Jeff a question and then Counselor McKechnie next.
Yes, thank you. With regards to options, I don't want to wade too deeply into that because we still have no direction from the landowners. There's certainly options available and those private property owners can contact their legal counsel to determine the options. But as the mayor suggested, the road could be conveyed to the property owners who form a road association and jointly own that road. And I guess that's completely dependent on the committee and council's decision with regards to this request to assume the road.
Okay, Counselor McKechnie.
Yeah, are the landowners, like, do they have any idea what it would cost to bring the road up to municipal standards? Has anybody done any homework on that on their end? Tammy?
Not that I know of because the biggest issue is the baseball diamond would have to be moved. So just to get a truck in there to get around, to get turned around, or they're going to have to back all the way out with the plow, which doesn't make any sense. So I don't think that it's even, I think that maybe Jeff had looked at it with me like last year and like with the baseball diamond being part of the turnaround and it's up, like, the grade is probably 10 or 15 feet higher than the road where the baseball diamond is. So it's not a, I mean, if you want to take out the baseball diamond, then there's a possibility of having that turnaround. So it's.
But really, that's not our, it's not, it's not our road. So while the request came from the residents on the road, it's not coming from the road owner. So personally, when we see the two choices, I would suggest, and if someone wants to move, and second, the first recommendation, which is that we do not assume for winter maintenance, we haven't been, and we suggest that the residents contact the owners and they need to find a solution. But is there any more discussion on that or does someone want to move that to adopt Resolution 1? Counselor Wood Roberts and Counselor Smith? So it was the option one, first resolution in our agenda. Okay, so I'll read that. Thank you. So Counselor Smith, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that there is clear communication. There's, I think, five or six residents on the road here that had made this application, but there needs to be very clear communication back to them on the, on the path, you know, forward.
Yes.
Which would involve, you know, reaching out to the owner, making some decisions with regard to the baseball diamond. Obviously, these folks don't, maybe don't understand that they'd lose the baseball diamond or have to move the baseball diamond. So there's a lot there. We're not just saying no, but we're saying, folks, you need to do some problem solving first before this could be considered.
Yeah, so that doesn't need to be in the resolution, but I think from the conversation that, so Jeff, that would be you replying back to the owners, explaining this conversation, why council made the decision that it did and that, so one option would be they contact the owners and they form a road association and they own the road and they assume it. The other option is if they want us to assume it, they then have to be in touch with our Director of Public Works to see what would be involved in bringing it up municipal standard. And sadly, it might be, that might be the more complicated option, but we'll communicate to the people who put in this request. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, change recipe to receipt of the report on the first line.
Yes.
Thank you, Larry.
When I got to reading that, I might have fumbled over that word. Thank you, Counselor Clark. Okay, so I think we have direction. I did have a mover, Nancy Wood Roberts, and a second by Counselor Smith. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of a staff report pertaining to a request for the municipality to assume Rainbow Drive, being part Lot 16 concession 2, Part 8 Plan 19R-5386 in the geographic township of Harcourt. And further, that the committee of the whole recommend to council that Rainbow Drive shall not be assumed for winter maintenance. All in favor? And that is carried. Okay. Great. So next item in planning.
Yeah, so at the meeting in August, council passed a bylaw to update the municipality's procedural bylaw to provide council, local boards and committees of council with the flexibility to participate in meetings electronically. So the attached draft bylaw is a procedural bylaw for the Committee of Adjustment, which has been updated to incorporate these changes. Yeah, it's basically clerical update to that procedural bylaw and staff recommend that the committee of the whole pass or recommend to council that the bylaw be passed.
Any questions on that? It's just, like Jeff said, it's just our paperwork. Okay, so I'll need a mover, a seconder. Counselor Clark? Counselor Smith? Be it resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledged receipt of a report relating to the Committee of Adjustment procedural bylaw and further recommend that council pass an amended bylaw to govern the calling, place and proceedings of a meeting for the Committee of Adjustment. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. So next, we will move into our fire department and we'll bring forward our fire chief. Mr. Isles. Wait a minute till he's in the meeting.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
So a couple of reports, the standard, typical fire department report. Not a lot different there. The important thing is we've started our firefighter one and two recruit training. So that's back on course and we hope to have the testing done by the end of November. So let's positive move back to some normal routines. Call volume is up a little bit, but still not too big a surprise. Our calls do tend to go up year over year and it seems to be right across the board. Nothing in particular. The second report is just an emergency management report. It's kind of surprising and interesting to see that time goes by in a hurry, that this started in March 11th, to see how quickly things changed with the declaration of states of emergency. And some of the things that we've looked at through those various meetings. Certainly with the second wave, we are certainly quite busy. Lots of things on our agendas and typically an hour, two hours of a meeting discussing, like I say, everything from the patios or yoga entertainment or right up to, as I've added here, the roads department. So certainly we put some thought into the roads department, which certainly wasn't as key in the summer, but as, as snow comes, is certainly going to be an essential service. So a lot of it was to help council understand what we do and, and certainly understand where we're headed with some of the roads department decisions and, and processes moving forward. I think that's it. Anybody has, certainly there may be some questions?
Yeah, the emergency control group asked Mike to put this together because we want to convey to the public and to council what we've been doing. And as he said, we've been still, you know, meeting regularly and oh, this crisis is not over by a long shot. And so we have to be at the ready all the time. And I'm just really proud of all the DICEART staff that are in on this group and how we've been working together by consensus and bounce ideas off each other. And when we get sometimes strange requests and, and, you know, we really are doing our best to keep our employees, our residents safe and interpret what the rules are as they change. So any questions on either report? Counselor Wood Roberts?
I just have a question for Mike. I'm not sure if it was last week or the week before, you were called out to a motor vehicle accident and spent a few hours actually looking for the driver. Does that get billed out to his insurance company or the highways or something because it was on the provincial highway?
Where possible, yes, I do bill for that because that one's on 118. Because it's on a provincial highway, I can bill for that. So but each, each call we do, whether it's alarm call, I have that option. But yes, it's case by case, but in that case, yes, there will be a bill go.
Okay, do we see that anywhere at budget time? Just a question for Barbara, that that sort of income or that sort of money that's coming in for those sort of circumstances? Is that a separate line somewhere?
No, that's part of the revenues. There's, there is a revenue, there is a revenues line that pertains to accidents that we can claim for, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's a good question because we don't see it sort of separated out as how many. So I, it used to be around $350 an hour or something like that. So I don't know if we, is our fee the same? Do you want to just, seeing as we're asking that?
So all the fire department billings I tie to the MTO rate just because it's an established rate. It's not an arbitrary rate. The MTO rate tends to go up annually. Presently, I think it's $485 an hour. So that's what I bill for. Certainly, that's what I get billed, paid for, for a car accident on 118, but then I extrapolate that to use that same figure for any other claims that the fire department makes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so any other questions on either a report, the September monthly report or the emergency control group report? No, well, thanks for putting that together. And we do want to, you know, if the rest of council ever have any questions in terms of what the emergency control group is doing, by all means, just reach out to Mike on that. So I need a mover and a seconder for the first report. Counselor Clark, Counselor McKechnie? Be it resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the September 2020 Fire Department report. All in favor? Carried. And again, mover, seconder, please. Counselor Wood Roberts and Deputy Mayor Kennedy? Be it resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the emergency management update. All in favor? Carried also. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So we're moving along to Kibbutz Day. Public Works will bring Rob back in and IP Lee, John is going to join us as well. For those of you who listened to Canoe FM, John was doing an interview yesterday morning on Canoe FM, which was great. I heard him. Very lucky to have Canoe to be able to get our message out. Okay, so Rob, first up we have is the October Public Works update where we're at.
Yeah, so we are nearing near end here, so we're trying to tidy some things up. Resurfacing Digman Road that was recently approved is ready for resurface. The contractor does believe it will get done this fall. It was actually slated for this week, but obviously the weather is going to throw a wrench into that. I just checked the 14 day forecast and it looks like it's going to hold. So hopefully that road will get topped this fall. The, some other bigger projects, the Coleman Lake Bridge, so everything has been installed. We're just waiting for pavement at this point and we can wrap that project up. Halliburton Lake Road in Fort Irwin, just waiting on some, some minor finishes there, some line painting, topsoil and seed. We're a little concerned, we may have missed the window on that. So that may be a carryover till next year. We'll have to wait and see what the weather does. The, well, we're staying, going back to bridges, our OSUM reports, all the field work is done. So we should be getting a draft report here shortly, final report, hopefully by the end of the month. And the Drag River Bridge Condition Survey has been completed, but there's been no, no flags raised on their, their investigation there, which is good news for us. You know, there's nothing needing to be done right away on that, that section. Those were kind of the highlights I had on the first report. Is there any questions from council?
Questions? Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Yes, thanks. Rob, the Coleman Lake Bridge. When I was out there a week back, that, you know, the new bridge surface looks great. As you said, it's still got the that signs up as people approached the bridge on both, from both directions. Five kilometers per hour. Do you intend to leave those signs up?
No, they were installed temporarily for the temporary bridge because it was single lane. We didn't make those signs up. It's just something we had in stock and it was solely meant just to slow people down for the single lane bridge.
Okay, you know, residents of the area really enjoyed, if you like, the slower pace of traffic. You know, with the temporary bridge being in there and, and even now, the, you know, the signage requires that people, the truck drivers in particular, slow down. Are there any thoughts in terms of how we might manage the, that's going forward?
Sorry, you were a little broken up there, John, but I think you're referring to how we could control speed going through there with the new bridge deck. Quite, quite honestly, no. In my mind, it's no different than any other bridge we have. You know, people have to drive according to the road conditions. So the people that are going to speed through there, I'm not so sure that they would obey any warning signage we have up there. The signs that are up there now, as I was on site, not that I was up there a lot during the process, but when I was up there, not everybody followed the advice of the signage. You know, even though we, we tried to slow them down, they had somewhere to go. So I don't think signage is the answer, is the short answer.
Okay, now you're, the contractor, who was great in terms of his interaction with the residents in the area, keeping them posted. You know, and as they dialogued with him about speed, he'd made a suggestion that there was a approach he had seen used elsewhere, whereas essentially, I'll call it a seasonal speed bump. He had a different technical term for it, that, you know, was there during the summer, but was interfere with snow plowing and frankly, the traffic, you know, coming out of the pits back there and so forth is, is a summertime issue. Did anybody talk to you about that?
Yes, I was approached by one of the repairs on site.
All right, is that something that makes sense? Practical in this situation?
From me, from a public work standpoint, I would say no. Like, winter maintenance aside, it's something you have to fasten to asphalt somehow. It's something we would most certainly have to inspect more frequently. Right now, we patrol the roads once a month. You know, placing something that is meant to slow down traffic, I would say you would have to patrol at least weekly to make sure that it's there and functioning as it should. Fastening would be a whole other different conversation. I'm not sure how you would fasten it. You couldn't glue it because. Um, fastening would be a whole other different conversation. I'm not sure how you would fasten it. You couldn't glue it because you would just tear the asphalt up when you're done. You don't generally, we don't like poking holes in brand new asphalt to, you know, to spike it down or anything to that effect. Um, but, but the larger concern I would have is if it's okay on Coleman Lake Road, then why wouldn't we put it on adjacent to the rest of our bridges? Um, so it may become just a, an issue that we can't maintain. We just wouldn't have the resources for.
Yeah, it, it, interesting. It always comes back to uh, it, it, and it's everywhere. And later, there's a, in, in this department, there's a request uh, about traffic and speed on, on another road. So I, I, you know, I think um, as Rob has pointed out, that there, those things are awfully difficult to, and we just ruin a brand new road. So, um, moving on.
I'm not proposing that we ruin a road.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think and the, and the correspondence that we receive every month, uh, in addition to verbal complaints and otherwise, um, is that speeding is a, a terrible issue on many of our roads, not just bridges, but on many of our roads. And, and we need to find a way to address it. Um, and uh, you know, to me, it's as simple as that. We can't just throw our hands up and say there's nothing we can do.
Yeah, Rob, if the weather um, continues to stay favorable for um, resurfacing, is there any chance Sullivan will get uh, put in the mix?
Absolutely. Yeah, it was, it was already slated as part of the twenty twenty work, so it should be done before Dignan.
Thanks very much.
Any, any other questions on some of the status? Um, update for Public Works? Seeing none, a mover and secondar please to receive that. Counselor McCackney and Counselor Wood Roberts. Uh, be it resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the October twenty twenty Public Works Department update. All in favor? Okay, uh, so we'll go into the um, road status update.
Yeah, it's more of a continuation on mine, just kind of a piggyback from the operational side.
Okay. Um, and so we move our secondar to that. Counselor Smith? Oh, question though? First, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Happy to move it, uh, in terms of receipt. Just a, a question, Rob, uh, um, and you may recall, uh, we had a little bit of discussion um, about this going back uh, when the infrastructure committee still existed. This is a concept of a uh, of a deposit uh, uh, construction sites, um, to uh, uh, something to protect the roads so that um, you know, when uh, somebody was putting in and whether they're putting in a new driveway or whether they're uh, uh, doing major construction, um, we seem to frequently run into situations where that construction um, results in significant damage uh, to the roads or um, you know, at the end of the new driveway or at the end of existing driveway. And um, and so we had talked about that, the infrastructure committee, but I don't believe that you've yet got a mechanism that allows you to uh, pass that responsibility on to the uh, um, the owner, have you?
Uh, no, and what, what that would require is probably a whole new entrance bylaw, um, which we don't have. We have a policy for, for driveway entrances and that type of thing. Um, but, but at the end of the day, we would need something enforceable by the bylaw department. Um, I believe one of our neighboring municipalities, Minden, went through this maybe last year. Um, but it is something we can maybe bring forward and just see what, what they've adopted in their municipality and see if it'll fit here. But I believe they have something in place.
So, Counselor.
Uh, Minden Hills does, I think, and, and uh, somehow we've got to find a way to uh, to address this because uh, frankly, in uh, in areas where there's a fair amount of construction going on, it's uh, it's actually shameful uh, what happens to our roads with the uh, degree of damage. Just done in some cases. Some uh, sites managed to do a, a complete build and um, you wouldn't know. A- and then there's others where because there's a careless contractor, uh, particularly those that come from afar, uh, they just abuse the roads. And um, and as a result, everybody that drives that stretch of road is subjected to uh, poor road conditions for years to come. Um, and there's no uh, consequences uh, for the uh, you know, the construction company or, or the owner who didn't uh, you know, uh, police it if you want.
So we.
I'd like to see us bring something forward there.
Okay, so we had talked about this many years ago. And you're right, Counselor Smith, we brought it up again. I remember talking about uh, driveway entry permits, but it would be more likely at the building permit stage because if somebody uh, you know, has an old three season cottage, they're not applying for a new driveway entry permit, uh, but they're applying for a building permit or even a, a major renovation permit. Um, so maybe it would be something to work in conjunction with the building department as opposed to just driveway entrance. Uh, so uh, go ahead, Rob.
Uh, yeah, just, we, we can't focus solely on the building permits because it's also landscaping projects um, that aren't necessarily permitted, so.
But so then how would we regulate? How would we know? So um, I think Counselor Smith has made a point. So maybe, Rob, you know, you can have discussion with the other departments, uh, and, and see how we could bring something forward to ensure that the people who are doing damage to the roads by bringing large float vehicles or um, that type of thing and uh, you know, clearly doing damage to, to the road in front of their driveway, whether it be how, however we want to regulate that. So I do have a mover on the, on the receiving of the road status. If I could have a secondar on that. Counselor Wood Roberts. And when you have time, Rob, just, you know, it's not, not a rush on that one, but at some point, see what the other municipalities have for that. So I had the mover secondar be it resolved that the committee hold non- acknowledges receipt of the October road status update. All in favor? Carried. Uh, Loon Lake Property Owners Association requests for signage on Loon Lake Road.
I think we missed one.
Okay, what did I miss? Oh, the big one, huh? Just go went over that.
Glazed over that one.
What could I say? My, my, I tapped the wrong thing. Um, yes, this is gonna probably spark some interesting conversation and I really appreciate uh, the, the detailed report. I'm gonna turn it over to you and maybe you can explain uh, uh, where we're at, uh, for not just council, but all these people who are, are, are probably listening and tuned in to find out what's happening and how we're making decisions going forward with DICER roads.
Um, to start off with, I want to be very, very, very clear that this is a preliminary report. We're not asking to carve anything in stone at this point. Um, what I did is show you um, how the software is working with the level of service that was adopted by council, which is the network performance of sixty-five. It is very achievable. Um, you'll see the, the network performance of sixty-five is included in one of the options. I've also thrown some different funding scenarios towards you as well. Um, this is strictly for discussion. I can take one of these options, um, bring it back in-house and kind of massage it a little bit. Uh, you know, you'll tweak some uh, tweak some parameters and come back with a detailed report. We can go completely off the board and go with different funding. Um, that is completely up to council at this point. I am looking solely for direction. Um, and whatever direction I get today, I will make the commitment to get it back to council if that's the desire. Um, so it fits, it aligns better with the budget process. Um, but, but a few notables in this report is in years past, the road needs study never considered gravel roads. So it would look only at hardtop roads and put them into a capital plan. We have changed that. Gravel roads are now included as part of the capital plan for gravel resurfacing or potential upgrade to surface treatment. You'll note in here. Um, I did put a parameter in there. I picked a number strictly out of thin air of a traffic count of greater than or equal to one hundred cars a day. I've asked the software to put that into, uh, take that in consideration and upgrade those roads as they come up and as they fit into the program. Um, every road is included with the exception of roads that we do not maintain year round or the connecting link, which is subject to uh, separate funding. Um, mov- moving ahead of the graph, I know there's gonna be lots of questions, so I'll, I'll be done talking here very shortly. Um, if you go down to the, the network condition, all of these scenarios meet the objective set by council, having a network PCI of sixty-five, all have their own funding implications. Um, the one I'm a little foggy with, the next graph, the percentage of roads of PCI less than fifty. So anything less than a fifty is deemed poor in the software. Th- this is showing, uh, you know, with certain funding, we can eliminate all the roads of PCI less than fifty. Uh, I'm hesitant to think that is achievable. I think at any given point, there's going to be somewhere north of zero percent is going to be poor. Um, certainly the roads that we don't maintain year round that aren't part, part of the capital, the capital works could be, you know, a forty-nine, a fifty or a fifty-one at any given time. They are typically repaired with maintenance money, not capital money. So I just, um, although, you know, it is feasible, um, in the computer software to have, you know, other roads above fifty, always take that with a grain of salt. We will do our best to achieve that if that's the scenario we choose, but always keep that in the back of your mind. Um, the financial implications, one through four, gives you a ten-year costs um, versus the ten-year network performance. I will caution again, the ten-year cost is a forecasting tool. I'm not suggesting we commit to a ten-year resurfacing program. We should keep it to a year to two years max, um, as the winters uh, really take their toll on these roads and things can change year to year.
Okay, so thank you, Robin. We, the very last sentence you said, that's, that's the biggest difference with having the software program that we have, having the traffic counts now that we have and the way we're looking at our road network as opposed to what we did in the past, which was what we knew to do at the, you know, to have a road needs study. And then we were kind of locked in, but anything can happen in any given year. So a road that was slated for to be done in three years could need to be bumped ahead. And so uh, this is a much better system because it's fluid. Rob has the data and the information to be able to put into it and we can be looking at it on a, on a year or maybe two years out continuously as opposed to locking in a road needs study for a set number of years and sticking to that hard and fast. So, um, Rob, I just, one question for me and then we'll open up to the floor, which is an option two, which states the one point two five million with no annual increase and says this is the current level of funding for road resurfacing. Um, we brought that level up in two years. Just compared to two years ago, where were we at in terms of uh, of funding?
Oh, I'd have to go back and check the budget, but yeah, significantly less.
Yes, so we, we've already brought the target up quite a bit. I just, that's sort of the point I want to make a, a lot. Um, and uh, so yeah, open it up to questions and uh, see what, what the conversation is. Deputy Mayor Kennedy first and Counselor Clark.
And uh, thanks, Rob, for this information. It's a valuable tool, which will only improve over time as you put more data in. My question is, um, um, we're having a struggle meeting the uh, getting the jobs done with the money we've given the department already. So at what point does capacity? Um, where's, where's the, the line there? We could say we want to spend two million dollars a year, but if, in all reality, your department can only deliver one point five or one point four, then we need to be realistic about this. Uh, we've had projects left over the last two years. Um, I'm really partial to the number three, the one, one point five plus the three percent. But is that, is that achievable with the current resources you have?
That, that's the magic question. Uh, the, the trick and the balance I have to find here is as far as construction goes, we can prep um, ditch and replace culverts on about uh, ten centerline kilometers per year. So depending on what the projects, the bulk of the projects are gonna be, if a lot of them are gonna be overlays, well, we don't do cover replacement on overlays. So they can come in and they can, you know, they can be in and out in, in no time. So we have to find that balance. Um, it's we're asking it to achieve a goal of a minimum sixty-five. So it has all kinds of tools and how to do that, you know, ranging from full depth pulverization and double surface to slurry seal to double surface treatment overlays. So generally on overlays, you don't do any excavations. You kind of go over top of what's there and carry on. So when you get into full depth reclamation, which is pulverizing, that's the ones we really have to focus on. Those are the ones we have to prep. Once you exceed ten kilometers of that type of uh, that type of treatment, it really does stress our resources. Um, and I'm not saying we couldn't do it. It depends on the shape of the road, um, depends how deep the culverts are, that type of thing. Um, the, you know, we, we have so much resources to, to do the work. Um, but if it takes us all summer to prep the roads and you, you end up in October and they can't surface it. So it was kind of all for naught. Um, but basically, that's why I'm saying if we plan to a one to two year, if we just, if we decide on a level of service, we can plug it into the software. It will kick out each roads and the, the treatment type of each road. And I would still have to go through each road line by line and see, do we have to change culvers? Do we have to ditch it? Do we have to berm it? Um, that type of thing. So again, although this is a good forecasting tool, we still have to delve down into the details once we kind of hit enter on the keyboard.
Excellent point. Um, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I agree with, with um, Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Um, option three, I think is probably the, the best one to take a look at. And, and the context of that is, is we're increasing in terms of the population, the amount of road traffic we've got here. There's no doubt about that. Also though, is, is the maintaining the, our infrastructure, maintaining the roads in good condition, given climate change and and reality is we're gonna have a lot more weather events. That's very, very hard on this. To speak, to be able to, to maintain that, uh, being more proactive, uh, given the option three. Uh, the reality is we may have to increase the size of our staff, our road staff to, to address that. Um, which is, which is going to probably require some kind of a bump in tax rate. And that's not often a, a favorable thing among our, our electorate, but still it's a reality of, of living in the north and, and having a level of um, um, a certain quality or standard for our roads. Uh, the, the additional item and, and can't be probably answered yet is, is with regard to the service review. And are there implications for perhaps the county picking up certain areas on, or certain aspects of the, of, of the road maintenance? That's that's something we can't answer at this point, I guess, until they're through their, their discussions. But that's just uh, another one that we will have to keep in the back of our minds is, as could impact you know, our, um, resource requirements for maintaining our certain standard of roads. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Wood Roberts?
Um, just a question for Rob. Um, the numbers from the traffic count studies have not been put into this data into the dot software yet, have they?
Yes, the, the data that I do have is in the software. We're still waiting on Ward one numbers.
Okay.
Any, anything else on that? Counselor, okay, nope. Uh, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, first, uh, uh, Rob, uh, you know, congratulations. Uh, thanks for uh, for being proactive and bringing us forward. Um, I think that uh, starting to get this information uh, at this stage before we're into the actual uh, budget review cycle uh, is so important, uh, particularly with uh, roads, a uh, topic of uh, extremely high priority and also a topic that uh, draws a uh, you know, very large portion of our budget. So um, you know, getting some uh, a sense of uh, of options in terms of dollars uh, to be invested is uh, is critically important. And as I said, good for you for bringing that forward. The uh, you know, the challenge here is uh, getting a sense of, of what this will mean. Uh, not only, um, you know, in terms of uh, of one year. Uh, so you talk about uh, um, you know, uh, returning into a hard surface or putting in the first hard surface for those roads that have a traffic count of in excess of uh, of one hundred. Um, you know, there's uh, a, a number of roads. There's a letter later in today's agenda from folks on Redken, uh, from the stretch there. Just Lake Road, uh, there's the uh, there's the dump road that uh, to the Knesset's uh, landfill that has huge traffic volume, uh, pretty short road, but uh, terrible condition. Uh, you know, Irish Line uh, is a road that again was a hard surface that uh, you know, there's been a lot of complaints about. Um, so, you know, how far are you from being able to map? Um, you know, which of these roads would get addressed in the coming year, twenty twenty-one? Would you be able to do all of them? Uh, or are you looking at prioritizing uh, some and uh, and only doing a portion of those in twenty twenty-one and, and deferring some of them to twenty-two or uh, has that sort of uh, of analysis been completed yet?
Uh, not final. Um, it is ongoing. Say, I just, I'm wary to bring anything final at this point until I get traffic counts for Ward one. Um, which, you know, will be done this fall. Uh, what I can tell you is the software looks at the current condition of the road, uh, looks at traffic count and it will fit in an upgrade where it Uh, what I can tell you is the software looks at the current condition of the road, uh, looks at traffic count and it will fit in an upgrade where it can. You know, if, if it, uh, if it's a decision whether to, to regravel it or put a surface treatment on, it's going to lean towards the, the surface treatment. So and I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to bring it up again anyways. The upgrading the surface treatment, I picked a number out of thin air at a hundred cars equal to or greater than for the ADT. Some jurisdictions use a hundred, some use four hundred. I believe the MTO uses a thousand, um, before, before they service treat a road. If we decide on a, a funding formula, um, you know, be it one that's presented here or something off the board. When I come back for council, I can run different scenarios with different traffic counts. If council still sees fit, um, we can, we can put every road into there, traffic counts of, you know, anything greater than zero, we can put it into the, into the, into the program and just see kind of how it plays out. You know, I wouldn't say, it wasn't just going higher than a hundred cars because we don't have a lot of roads that are higher than a hundred cars a day. Um, I think our average car count so far is about a hundred and eight. So a hundred is pretty average at this point. But what I will do is I will bring back, uh, different scenarios with, uh, basically including all the roads, um, with every traffic count to see if they fit into the program.
Excellent.
And would they be staged between multiple years or could you get, um, you know, all of those roads returned to a hardtop, uh, in a single year, twenty twenty-one?
Uh, it would be staggered. Yeah. Yeah, we're talking big dollars.
I believe, Rob, you said a while ago, if you took every road that we had turned back to gravel was just doing those roads alone was, uh, one point something million dollars. So it would, it would definitely be, and, and really then is that the desire that where we have a road that's got an average daily traffic of forty? To put a surface treatment on it? Probably not. Uh, so I think those are decisions and I think what Rob is really looking for today is, um, some guidance and direction on where the, the sort of funding level should sit. And some years, the, the actual work done will be less and some years, just because of the way uh, jobs work will be more. But if we set a funding level target with an annual increase target, then, um, that gives him the ability to sort of say, well, you know, these roads qualify. So one year we may actually only spend one point three million dollars, but the year after, uh, just the way the, the lengths of road and the level of what's needed might end up being one point six million in spending, but is achieving that level of, of, uh, of, uh, not spending of, of, uh, from our budget. A level of contribution, if you will, not necessarily every year the level of spending is going to be the one point five, but then he can look at that, which is a significant increase from what we're doing right now. So we do have to look at how it fits into our overall budget. But I heard two people earlier, uh, which I can't remember, I think Counselor Clark and someone else, uh, think option three was something that we should be aiming for, which is a significant increase and gives Rob direction. Is there any other comments? Is there someone else that wants to throw a different option? Agree with option three? Counselor Smith?
The, um, you know, uh, roads to me are an extremely high priority. And, um, and so, uh, I'm fully supportive of, uh, of ramping up, uh, the dollars that, uh, we allocate to that. I would, uh, um, you know, with respect, uh, just offer a little different perspective, uh, than that that you shared, uh, Mayor Roberts, the, you know, we needn't be, uh, constrained, uh, by, uh, you know, the dollars that we draw year to year, uh, from tax revenue, uh, for roads. Uh, we've got, uh, considerable dollars in, in reserves. There's been some, uh, I'll call it surprise grant money that's come our way in the, uh, past year, year and a half. And, uh, and in addition, uh, you know, today, uh, at the borrowing rates that are available, uh, if we had to deal with a, uh, a lump sum situation that, uh, you know, is, uh, uh, invested money that's going to then last for several years. Uh, we've got lots of borrowing capacity. And, um, and so just picking an amount, uh, to me isn't the, uh, isn't the ideal answer here. Um, it seems to me we need to, um, you know, as Rob has started to lay out, identify some criteria by which defines the roads that need work. And, uh, and then say council to make some decision in terms of those priorities. And we'll get the, uh, the dollars, uh, from any one of a number of alternative places. So it's not just about setting in dollars. It's really about establishing using that to define, uh, the work that gets done, presuming that we can, uh, you know, get contract resource to, uh, you know, do the hard surface treatment or whatever that may be. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't limit it to just the, uh, you know, that kind of view of tax revenue.
And, and just to, Rob's going to, uh, answer that, uh, but just to talk about the, the grants that we received, uh, modernization funds that came forward, um, you know, that we still have some left and Barbara will speak to that when we get to the budget time. Um, but anything else that we've received is not allocated to, to roads. I think it's going to have to come, this will have to come at a tax dollars. Rob is going to answer your comments and then Counselor Wood Roberts had her hand up next.
Well, I just, I had more of a, a comment about, uh, just elaborating what you had mentioned about, uh, expanding our criteria and kind of what we base the, uh, the resurfacing on. Um, in the report, you know, it makes mention that, you know, council may want to extend priority rankings to include operating speed and terrain type. So one thing we have to keep in mind is we do have roads with very low traffic counts that are surface treated right now. You know, that they were done under the, the old program, but they were also done because they're really out of the way. It takes a long time to get there. So, you know, there's some roads where we, it takes, uh, it could take the greater two hours to get there. He grades for ten minutes and then he's gone again. The next time he's got to travel for two hours. So, you know, he could lose them for close to half a day for what really is a, a very short road. So there is something to be said for, um, surface treating the low, the low volume road strictly on a time-saving, uh, point of view. One thing I want to make sure that council was very, very aware of is throughout this process, we are going to have roads that may not see a, uh, a perfect PCI of say a hundred ninety or a hundred for, for many years. Uh, you may have a road that's sitting at a sixty-five right now, and if we put a single surface treatment on it, it pumps it up to an eighty, for example. So members of the public may see that is, you know, you surf, you surface my road, but it's still rough. So the ride condition rating is still going to become an issue and I think it's something we have to take into consideration, not so much for twenty twenty-one, but for road, for years, uh, moving beyond that. Because although we can keep the PCI's relatively high, I just, I do have some concern that the rideability of some of these roads, if they're not improved, you may get some criticism on that. Um, just as, uh, we get complaints about people speeding on roads that are too smooth now after they're resurfaced. So we have to find that balance and I really don't know where that balance is. But I think somewhere if we decided that, you know, we take a rideability out of a, a six out of a ten, for instance, is kind of our benchmark. But that's something we have to consider moving forward. But it's not something we should be discussing right now.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Counselor Wood Roberts, go ahead.
I just had a question for Barbara. If we were to look at like option three with the annual increase, what does, what is that impact on our, on our tax dollar to our residents?
So if you're looking at the municipal levy, uh, right now we're running about one point two five million. If you go with option three, you're looking at another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's about two and a half percent on the municipal levy.
But there is some funding available right now, correct? Like we have some in the reserve?
Uh, currently we do have some, uh, gas tax money that we received, uh, in, uh, twenty nineteen that has been sitting in the reserve and available for, uh, roads projects.
Thank you.
I'm just not a lot in favor of borrowing for a significant amount for roads.
I think with the increases that we've made over the last couple of years, a question that I've heard so far, I think three people are, are leaning to option three, that, uh, we may get there through the levy, which is what people, when they're paying their taxes, you can at least say we're putting it to roads and, uh, you know, it might not be your road this year, but it is, it will be looked at. Counselor McKechnie?
Yeah, I think, uh, we all agree that we would all, every one of us in the different wards have, uh, concerns in regard to roads. And, uh, we all agree that we would love to fix the roads up to our constituents', um, standards. But, you know, we got to be realistic up here. Our, the number of days that Rob and his staff have to fix these roads is is all determined, of course, by weather and it's, it's not very long. And, and also I, I, I just think that, you know, it's, it's great. We could put two million, five million, we, but we don't have the manpower. We don't have the miller, they, they don't have it. Uh, I think we're just, we got, we have to become more realistic and especially in these times with COVID. And I hate blaming COVID, but I really believe that we don't, what's going to be down the road here in six months? I mean, uh, I, I think it's, this is, uh, it's great to plan. We're planning. I, I agree with the one point five, number three. But I think we have to be realistic here of, uh, what's, what's around the corner for us. Um, and so I'm not being negative, but because I want all the roads fixed too. Like we, I, I have more complaints about my gravel roads. We didn't get enough of a, uh, dust suppressing on them. So there's so much work out there and there's only so much time. There's only so much men. And, um, it's, it's, it's a tough battle we have.
We do, but I think, uh, as somebody stated earlier, I can't remember, but bringing this forward this early in October, way ahead of budget season is, is really giving us, giving staff a commitment of what this council is willing to do. Uh, and from there, Rob will be able to get all that information. We'll still be making decisions when it comes to budget time. But this is, uh, in October to be able to give that sort of benchmark level of funding that we'll, that are, uh, that we're willing to put in. So I've heard now, I think, four people say option three. So would I have a mover and seconder for the resolution and I'll write in the number option three? Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Counselor Clark? Excellent discussion. Thank you, Rob. Uh, be it resolved that the committee of the whole received this report on twenty twenty-one road resurfacing costing options and that the committee of the whole recommend that council direct staff to return at a later date with a detailed resurfacing report for consideration in the twenty twenty-one budget based on option three. All in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Okay. Now the Luna Lake signage request. And just unmute there, Rob?
Oh, sorry about that. Um, so the next two items, uh, are kind of intertwined a little bit. And again, I don't know if these requests are coming forward now because we did the traffic counts or in spite of because we did the traffic counts. But it just feels like the floodgates are opening on people concerned with, uh, with vehicles traveling, you know, perceivedly fast on municipal roads. So I'll tackle this first one, uh, at Luna Lake, uh, first. The, uh, we do have a policy, uh, policy number six, which does give council the, the authority, um, to approve warning signage and to have warning signage installed. Staff concerns with the first, uh, the first request is, um, in, in bullet point there. So the Ontario Traffic Manual has been around for many years. Um, it came out in oh, two thousand, I believe. Um, there's many volumes in it and the, the the volume that deals with warning signage by and large hasn't really changed. So uh, putting a text that says slow on a warning sign is kind of, you know, that, that's gone by the wayside. Uh, people are into the pictures and that type of thing. The, uh, the signs proposed are larger than that in the traffic manual. Um, I don't think we want to veer too far from standards in the traffic manual as it was developed by engineers and lawyers and we have to have a real good reason not to follow it when, when possible. Having those oversized signs, uh, you know, does cause concern for, uh, wind load, uh, potential snow coming off the plow. Uh, that combined with the undersized poles is just going to be a, another maintenance item for us to look after. The, uh, later on in that, uh, they don't specify reflectivity. So there's been no reflectivity in the manual that we have to meet. Uh, we get our signs tested every year. And the, the last bullet point is the annual daily traffic is fifty-three and the eighty-fifth percentile is fifty, uh, kilometers an hour. So to me, this, this is strictly a, uh, an opinion of myself. I don't think there's a speeding issue there if they're doing fifty kilometers an hour. What I'm finding now is there's a lot of perceived speeding on some of these roads and maybe it's because of the alignment of the road. Maybe it's because the brush out near the road. I'm not really sure. But again, going back to, uh, Coleman Lake Bridge, I don't think it's something the signage is going to fix. So I just want council to be very cognizant of that. And if we do start allowing signs on every road that people aren't paying attention to, that sign pollution is very much a real thing. Um, and we don't want to start, uh, clogging up our corridor with signage that people aren't paying attention to.
Um, the sign that Halberton Lake, uh, Property Association or Cottage Association, uh, and we worked with them on that, which was sort of the, the picture sign, more of a neighborhood, you know, slow children and, and, uh, that was approved and could they do something like that? And, and they pay like the up at Halberton Lake, they paid for it themselves. They just need permission. We, we provided the post and, uh, we did the installation, but they paid for the sign. So it was sort of more of a neighborhood thing. What about something like that in this situation?
Again, council's sole discretion. Um, it's something we have allowed in the past. Uh, something similar happened at Kinesis Lake, uh, five or six years ago, I think. Again, I'm not a big advocate of signs. Um, if people don't want to pay attention to the black and white signs that say fifty kilometers an hour, they're probably not going to pay attention to the other ones, but it shows an effort to get people slowed down, um, due diligence of, of some respect. Kind of the theme of today is just be careful setting precedent because if you do it on Luna Lake, you're going to get requests on Trapper's Trail. You're going to get requests on One O' Lake Road. Um, you know, there's all kinds of roads surrounding lakes that people have concerns about.
Yeah, that's why I'm suggesting that the cottage association take it on themselves and, uh, with, you know, and it's more of a neighborhood than Counselor Clark and then Counselor Smith.
Yeah, um, yeah, for, uh, through you, um, Madam Mayor, I guess for consideration at the township, we're, I guess some of our responsibility is for a safety factor and I, I agree with Rob. You know, some roads, you know, you, you, you improve them a bit or some people are just in a rush. They're going to be, you know, this, this slowdown signs aren't going to work. However, we get into some roads where the sightlines are an issue and the reality is we've got a lot more people up here these days. And especially with, you know, especially with more people exercising along the roads or walking along the roads. It is a bigger issue with, uh, with people's safety. I'm just wondering if, if perhaps through, uh, Rob, if we can take a look and see what's being done in some other areas to, um, look at it from the point of view of safety and mitigating safety and and are there certain road conditions that warrant the township being involved? And others that perhaps as, as Mayor Roberts has suggested, it, uh, it would be incumbent on, on the neighborhood to ask for signs that meet requirements that, that you've outlined, Rob. Put those up if, if it's, if it's more of a discretionary thing as opposed to us trying to manage the safety issue.
I, I know some of the larger centers, um, have policy for traffic calming, but they also have engineering departments that administer it and investigate it.
Um, Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
I just find that, um, we're getting more and more of these, but we have to also remember, these are all mostly dead end roads we have in the municipality. It's your neighbor that's speeding. It's not, not Joe Blow from Kokomo driving through to get from one area to another. Uh, it's your neighbor. So perhaps the lake associations or the neighborhoods should start to, to, uh, advise their neighbors to slow down. The more we spend on improving our roads, the more that this is going to become an issue. And perhaps a letter from council to the OPP asking for, um, some presence for the two point two million dollars a year we're giving them, uh, to help the, the speeding on some of our side roads might also be beneficial.
Yes, I was thinking that earlier. Uh, Counselor McKechnie?
Yeah, I agree with Pat a hundred percent. I think that we, uh, the, the lake associations, they're, uh, you know, they send out a lot of really important, uh, information every month or every week or whatever. But I really think that they should be educating the people more and more and really drilling down on them to slow down. I mean, I know on my road, I'm driving along and like Pat said there, I'll go by somebody that I know and I'm going way too fast and I know they're mad as hell at me. And, um, it's, you know, I, I should be told that, uh, like in, in a message that, uh, I'm, I'm driving too fast. I, I really believe that we got to educate. And it is our, it's the neighbors who you're going to run over or, uh, run, run into and, uh, I just can't emphasize that enough that, uh, we got to educate the people to slow down, including myself.
Okay, um, so we have a resolution just Okay, so we have a resolution just to that we acknowledged the report. Oh, I see you, Councilor Smith, but I I will still suggest it in the correspondence back to them that we put them in touch with the the Halberton Lake Association and that sign, and that if they want to do that at their expense, that we would help as we did with Halberton Lake for a post, Rob, and then to Councilor Smith.
The the caveat to others installing signs and purchasing them. The agreement made with certainly Halberton Lake, and I want to say Kinesis Lake years ago, was we provided old or repurposed signposts. So we're running out of those. So we we may be entering a phase where if we are supplying the posts, we will have to purchase materials to accommodate these requests.
Okay, thank you. But if they if so, they've put in this request and you'll get back to them, but then you can, you know, you can give them an alternative and so if we still have some posts, let's use those up. But Councilor Smith, go ahead.
Well, I I just offer a little different perspective. Rob made the point that, you know, sign proliferation doesn't necessarily accomplish anything. And, you know, when we approved the the Halberton Lake program this past spring, you know, it was, to me, anyway, it was kind of positioned as, well, let's give this a try and see what impact it has. And so before we have, you know, kind of a general approval with things happening all over, do we know if Halberton Lake traffic has slowed down as a result of the additional signings there?
Rob, go ahead.
I don't have any data to suggest one way or the other. I can say we've quit receiving complaints about feeders, but that could be wholly unrelated.
Okay, Council McKechnie?
Sorry, just just to continue to follow up on that, then, if 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 we don't have, you know, data to support the success of these things, I I'd be cautious about signs all over the place, you know, until we can have some confidence they have an impact. You know, as as Deputy Mayor Kennedy mentioned, a lot of these are dead end roads. What I will say that, you know, a lot of them aren't also dead end roads. I'll use Green Lake Road as an example. A road that is posted forty at both ends of it. It's a throughway there for traffic thinking they're taking a shortcut and avoid going through the Hamlet of of West Guilford. The, you know, the other reality is there are roads like Irish Line that have a lot of truck traffic related to a business enterprise as opposed to people that live on on the road. And and Rob has spoken in the past about the community safety zone concept, and he's got some sort of program in front of, I think, the MTO now to get some approvals or feedback, and there'll be an update there. And and that is probably a better vehicle, because again, it involves less signage. It gets a focus on establishing reasonable speed limits on all of our roads. I'll use the example of West Shore Road. There's a road that from end to end is legally eighty kilometers an hour. There are certainly portions of West Shore that you could probably safely travel eighty kilometers an hour or seventy five or whatever. But there are a lot of portions of West Shore. You shouldn't be going anywhere near that speed. But legally, because of the of the current signposting situation, it's eighty. And and so our community safety zone program needs to address what's an appropriate speed limit, road by road, and then we've got something that we can actually have the OPP enforce. And and so I think we need to look at this more holistically as opposed to responding to individual initiatives where, oh, I'll pay for a sign. And, you know, and then they get popping up all over the place.
I believe I saw another hand. Council McKechnie, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I I I think that signs up in Halberton Lake maybe have helped, but, you know, you 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 got to have common sense. We all have to have a common sense. You can't fix stupid. We're all driving too fast. And I just think we just, it's got to be something we're told every day about in 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 some type of a message. I really think that we've got to educate the people to slow down. These roads aren't built and to drive fast on, and we all do it. So you got to use common sense.
Okay, so all I have is a I do have a resolution just to acknowledge the report. Anyone want to move that? Council McKechnie, seconded by Councilor Smith, I believe. We resolved that the Committee of the Whole acknowledges this report concerning a request for warning signage on Luna Lake Road. All in favor? That's carried. So you'll you'll correspond back to them, Rob?
Yes.
Thank you. So second, I mean, the same conversation, so I don't know if, but again, it's a resolution to acknowledge the receipt of the report. Is there anything different that we want to discuss here?
This one's a little different in that they're requesting a speed reduction as opposed to just warning signage.
That's because it's such a good road. Is there any comment on that? Or Council Wood Roberts, go ahead.
Oh, it is a very, very busy road. There is a lot of dense areas of of population, and I think we should reduce the limit on that somewhat if we have that capability.
In what section, though? How do you determine where where?
Where's the town? Where's the township line along there, Rob?
There is a turnaround halfway through, so. Yeah, it's just something we would have to work in conjunction with Minden Hills to see if they wanted to carry on as well.
And so what, Council Wood Roberts, what are you proposing that it be changed to?
Is it forty or is it fifty right now?
It is fifty right now.
I mean, that is pretty quick when you get it, and it is quite narrow. I just I just think it should be reduced. I don't drive down there a lot, but when I do, there's a significant number of pedestrians. A lot of people have to cross the road to get to their lake access. There's a school bus that goes in and out down there, so I think it should be reduced to at least forty. Mr. Kennedy, what do you find? Because I know you live down that road.
I know it should be reduced, but I'll be the first one to get a ticket, probably. I think also education as well, that people are walking on both sides of the road and three abreast. So there's lots of criticism and complaints to go on both sides, but I think Rob is waiting for some information to come back on community safety zones. Is that correct?
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Well, and and it all boils back to, you know, we we just we just had a conversation on, you know, signage isn't really really the answer, and we're talking about lowering it from a fifty to a forty. But I am hearing, I'm I am hearing it's a windy road. I am hearing the mention of school buses. So it sounds to me like there there's there's an appetite to develop some sort of policy on this, so we can actually check off some boxes and either yes, it meets our criteria or it doesn't. You know, reducing the speed on Wigamaw Road and, you know, potentially put in a community safety zone on there. If we're going to do it for Wigamaw, why not Wonderland? You know, if we're doing it on Wonderland, why not Peninsula? So it just, we just got to be very, very careful how how we start this.
Okay, and so maybe going forward, I see Council Wood Roberts, that Rob, you can, again, make note of it, and it doesn't have to come back to the next meeting, but at some point, if we could have a discussion about what would be entailed and what roads would warrant being reduced speed. So we won't look on, like, let's look at it as a bit bit of a bigger picture. So if that's okay, Rob, come back with a report on on what would be involved in that. Go ahead, Rob, and then Nancy after.
Um, in in the interim, once we have the Ward one counts and operating speeds, if council desires, I can pass that on to the OPP as information for them. They can pick and choose what they do with it. Council may wish to consider putting a line a line item in the budget for paid duty OPP. You know, on this day, you're going to watch this road, throwing it out there.
Okay. Council Wood Roberts, go ahead.
I I just think if we're looking at the the signage for for lowering our speed limits, would traffic counts have an impact in that? So can that information come back with this discussion?
Yeah. Okay, so that was good discussion. And so I think we need to look at it, not just one road at a time, but but sort of our road network in and around the town or the built up areas where we know that there that there is a lot of walking, school buses, et et cetera. So I do need a mover seconder for this. Receive, Council Clark, seconded by Council Wood Roberts. We resolved that the Committee of the Whole acknowledged receipt of the report regarding a request for speed reduction and additional warning signage on Wigamaw Road. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. And again, will, Rob, you can communicate back to them that we're looking at that road as well as other roads, okay? I just gave you a whole pile of work. Sorry about that. Um, where are we?
It's still me.
Yeah, we've got a few more things in in the Public Works Department. We'll take a break after Public Works, but let's try to get through this section if we can. Robotic total station purchase.
So as part of the budget, $10,000 in there, we had talked about probably an infrastructure at the time to go through these pits that we own, figure out what's left in them, what we can do with them. Kind of where we sit. Since these pits were licensed close to ten years ago, they never have gone back to have a a survey done to see what's actually been taken out, what's remaining, that type of thing. So the intent initially was to have a third party come in, survey the Carroll pit and Kenaway pit specifically, give us a plan, a hard copy plan of kind of where we sit, the volumes that are left. And then we got to thinking that why don't, why can't we do this in house? We rented a total station, then we have full control of the data. We would have the 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 survey data. We could do our own plans. In conjunction with that, we did purchase some some software out of that money for $2,700. So I'm the one that's using this. The problem that I had is we rented it for a month is I have other obligations. So when we rent it for a month, I can use it for maybe three days. So it's it's not a lot of, well, it is money, but it's money well spent. If we had it here year round, we could pick and choose our days. We could expand the use of the of the software and the total station for potential layout on construction sites. I have done it to do a rough survey up at Watts Intersection, just to get some preexisting conditions there. So basically, what it boils down to is we could carry on with what I've what I've done so far, which is rent it for a month or two at a time, which does cost money. It won't get very good utilization because of my previous obligations. Or we could do a one time purchase now, and it will be here for fifteen years or better. The model that we have, it's in my office right now, it's two years old, and basically so it is a current model. When the models are no longer current, they keep making parts, replacement parts for them for seven years, and then they're discontinued. So after this model is discontinued, we have at least seven year support for parts, and assuming nothing breaks, it will last indefinitely.
Well, it sounds makes sense to me to purchase and be renting. Anyone else want to speak to that? Council Clark?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. Rob, how many pits have we got?
Six.
Thank you.
Councilor Smith?
Just a a quick question. Rob, are there any other costs involved? Software often involves, you know, ongoing maintenance or license fees. Or if you don't do that, then a couple of years down the road, you know, Microsoft, whoever use a new release of their operating system and nothing works of getting an upgrade. Is that part of the this type of, I'm not familiar with this total station thing, but is that part of that requirement here?
The total station has no additional fees. It'll be a one time purchase. The additional fees will be the AutoCAD software at about $2,700 a year. So that that software is highway software, so we could use it for I'll I'll go back to the Watts Trail. If we choose to do a realignment there, we could use that software, but it's also it could also be used for the pits as well.
Okay, so that software, you're paying 2,700 every year, and that includes maintenance of the software?
Yes, they've Autodesk has changed their structure. Before, you would buy the software once, and you could choose to do a subscription. If you didn't subscribe, you would lose the support, but generally, they would, you know, you would be good for four to five years, and then you would just buy again. But they've changed it to basically you have to subscribe every year.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So to me, I'd agree, this seems to make sense.
Okay, so anyone else wants to comment or there is a resolution to purchase? So move by, is that, are you moving Deputy Mayor Kennedy and seconded by Councilor Smith? Okay. We resolved that the Committee of the Whole acknowledges the report concerning the purchase of a robotic total station demonstration unit and further that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council authorize staff to purchase a robotic total station demonstration unit being a Spectra Precision Focus 35RX, complete with data collector from Cancel for $19,500 plus HST, and finally, that the purchase be funded jointly by the operating budget and the modernization fund. All those in favor? That's carried. Excellent. Okay, next is Connecting Links Program application.
Yeah, so just following up, we do have an application that's due in about three weeks. So we have narrowed down the scope to what we think we should be applying for this year. I have reached out to the ministry for an updated, what they think the updated pavement condition rating is, so our connecting link. But they have not received that information. I'm not even sure if they're going to evaluate the highways this year by the sounds of it. They didn't really sound too sure they were going to get that information. It's done generally every two years. But we did do the detail of the bridge condition survey, and there was no flags there. We will have some barrier upgrades and that kind of thing when we do the work. But there's nothing underneath that's gone horribly wrong. So what we are proposing is to inspect the underground infrastructure what's there, so which is primarily the storm system. The sanitary system is already being camered as part of the the ASI contract. So about every five to six years, they make it around our network. So that that part's already done. The I did have some concerns with the storm only in that the connection that Garden Retirement did when they had it excavated, there was a great issue with the the storm sewer that was underneath the road. So that kind of did pique our interest a little bit. So it's money well spent, especially if it's funded at ninety percent to go through the entire the the entire 1.2 kilometers and see what else is going on underneath that highway.
Yep. Anybody else? Anyone disagree with wanting to put that application in for that? Okay, so someone wants to move and second that? Council Clark and Councilor Donaldson? We resolved that the Committee of the Whole acknowledges the report concerning the 2021 Connecting Links Program application. And further that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council authorize staff to proceed with an application to the 2021 Connecting Links Program for the inspection of a storm sewer infrastructure for an estimated cost of $38,000, including non-recoverable HST, and finally, that the work be included in the 2021 operating budget. All in favor? And that's carried. And it's not the 38,000 we're applying for that. It's a would be 10% of that, right?
Hopefully, it can be funded up to 90%.
Okay. All right. Great. Well, we have the letter from Christine and Gary Vernon on Redken, and we also had delegation last year. I think we've spoken to the issue and to do with roads and when we if we are able to take some roads back to surface treated roads and what our criteria would be for that. So really, I just have a a letter, a a resolution, pardon me, to receive. But if there's any other comments specifically on their letter, Councilor Smith, you may want to comment. Go ahead.
I thank you. You know, as you noted, Mayor Roberts, there was a delegation last year expressing concern about this stretch of road and the fact that it burned back in 2018 from a hardtop to to gravel and lots of concerns about the process and the rationale. Now, it's not the only road this stretch of Kinesis Lake Road. It said the same thing, Irish Line, or it's about thirty kilometers, I believe, all around Dyers Art where that that occurred. But, you know, there a lot of communication from residents in this area. It happens that, you know, it's a stretch of road that has homes, cottages located on both sides of the road. And I was just curious, Rob, based on your preliminary assessment. And I was just curious, Rob, based on your preliminary assessment, you know, and the the possibility as part of the budget of getting your option three, where would something like this stretch of Redken fit in terms of being returned to a hard surface?
That I don't know now. Again, I'm not going to do anything really semifinal until I get the traffic counts for Ward One, just so everything's on an equal playing field.
And, and when will we get that report with the Ward One traffic counts?
I've reached out to them again, oh, sorry, I've reached out to them again this morning just to get a schedule for them, from them, so.
Okay.
They won't be long going through, there's only about 85 sections.
Are you, at our, at our previous meeting where you first gave us that, that early look at the traffic counts, you were going to provide an updated report with some additional columns of content. Are you waiting for the Ward One stuff to get that new, that additional report out, or is that something that you could do independently Ward One?
I was hoping to do it in conjunction with Ward One.
Okay.
Okay, so we do just have a resolution to acknowledge the, the letter and as I said, some of us, there was still emails from the gentleman who was at the delegation last year, so all things are being considered, but I just need a resolution to receive that, a letter to council? Anyone want? Counselor Clark? Counselor Wood Roberts? We resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the August 29th, 2020 letter from Christine and Gary Vernon regarding Redken Road. All in favor? And that's carried, thank you. And lastly, the municipal tire collection program, so John, I'm assuming that's you.
Good morning, everyone. This is a follow-up report to a council motion back in May to re-explore the tire recycling program. Just to remind everyone that the tires are regulated material now for waste diversion in Ontario. And in this program, tire producers are responsible for managing the end of life of used tires. Currently, we accept tires at the Halliburton and Harcourt landfills, they're kind of our designated spots. And then there are approximately 15 retailers or garages in Dyers Art, Halliburton County, and even getting into North Hastings that also accept tires. We reached out to a lot of the garages, to all of the garages in Dyers Art specifically. They, for the most part, very same consensus that they are getting their tires picked up. Maybe not as quickly as they would like, but they are still getting picked up. They, they all were of the opinion that they will only accept tires from the, from their customers. So primarily through tire changes happening on their premises. They're not open to receiving tires from non-customers. I reached out to the Resource Productivity and Recovery Authority, RIPRA. And their opinion is, as the authority that kind of oversees this program, if anyone is having issues with getting their tires collected, the garages should be calling their hauler, but also calling RIPRA to let RIPRA know, as RIPRA is the organization responsible for enforcing these kind of rules. In addition, we also reached out to the other municipalities in Halliburton County and also nearby to see what they were doing with their tire recycling program. All of them are planning to continue to accept tires at their landfill sites. The one exception is Quartha Lakes, which stopped this July. But already Quartha Lake staff is reporting that there's been a slight increase in illegal dumping of tires in roadside ditches. Because it's viewed as a revenue, like a financially neutral transaction, the municipalities don't receive any money for the tires, but it doesn't really cost anything to just have them stored on a, on a landfill site until they're picked up. Most municipalities are continuing to accept them and provide that one-stop shop to their residents to be able to drop off a wide range of materials at their landfill sites. So we presented three different options in this report. One is to continue to accept the tires and also maybe overflow tires, if you will, from the local garages. Option two is just to accept residential tires. And the third option would be to cease accepting any tires at both the Halliburton and Harcourt landfills.
Okay, so thank you for that report, John, and I'll open it up to the floor and when you're stating, state which option that you prefer and why, Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
I'd support option number one. That leaves the onus on the, on the the businesses to keep, still keep collecting tires. But in the instance where they end up having trouble getting them picked up and they run into, as West Guilford garage has run into issues with their insurance company with storage of surplus tires, that they would have an offer, an opportunity to take those surplus tires to us. And it also will stop the throwing tires in their ditches going forward, so I'm going to support option one.
Okay. And the other counselors? Which option they prefer? Counselor McCackney, then Counselor Clark? Well, unmute, don't forget.
Sorry. Yeah, I, I support option one also.
Okay, excellent. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, option, option one, it would be nice to go to option two, but reality factor as, as Deputy Mayor Kennedy has identified. And we can't leave our garages exposed like West Guilford, I suppose, option one.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
Thank you. It, it seems when you, when you look at the, at the feedback that's been collected from the, the various retailers, that the problem here is the inconsistency which the tires are being picked up. And, and frustration that some of these retailers feel is evident in their comments that calls, and I've certainly spoken with Carm at West Guilford Auto Center multiple times about this. You know, his frustration is they don't show up. He's got 300 tires there, he, you know, he doesn't have space for that. And, and so, you know, he as a retailer feels powerless in terms of, of getting them picked up. And so, you know, my question for John is what can we do as a municipal government to, to bring to the attention of this, you know, RSC or whatever you thought, you know, the RPRA, that they're not fulfilling their responsibility? And get pressure on them to pick up tires more frequently? Because even if you go to option one, it's not a, a treat in, you know, in the retailer's life to have to load up a truck with a couple of hundred tires and bring them to Halliburton landfill. You know, that's a, that's a lost day for somebody that's, you know, trying to, you know, earn a livelihood. You know, selling tires or repairing automobiles or whatever it may be. So we got to solve the problem. And the problem is that this Resource Productivity and Recovery Authority isn't fulfilling its responsibility, the obligation they have to get these tires picked up with some regularity. So how do we bring pressure to them?
So I'll let John answer and then Counselor Wood Roberts will go after. Go ahead, John.
Truly, the best pressure to apply to the Resource Recovery Productivity Authority would be for the individual garages to be contacting them because they have agreements with their haulers and if the haulers are not meeting those agreements, they need to share that with the authority who has the ability to actually kind of influence what the haulers are doing. We're, because we get our tires picked up, when we get them picked up, we're kind of aside to what the, the experience that the garages are having, so the garages have to self-advocate for themselves essentially. That's part of this new framework that we're moving to in the province and so I would encourage all those garages to be reaching out to RIPRA directly and voicing their concerns about the tires that are taking a long time to get picked up.
Okay, thank you. And so what maybe can happen out of, once the resolution is voted on and then maybe in your communication back to the local garages, you can make sure that they have that phone number, email contact of RIPRA so that they don't have to look it up and know where, you know, what, what they can do. So Counselor Wood Roberts?
Sorry, Mayor Roberts, can we as a, can we as a council, you know, as a municipality to RIPRA? The, you know, the fact of the matter is that, again, these individuals, you know, they're busy running a business. And it's one voice. If the municipality, as, as John has done here, he's collected feedback from half a dozen retailers. It's not just one guy that's having a problem. There is multiple, there are multiple retailers here that are saying process isn't working. I got one guy that says, they show up and pick up tires, I haven't been enough here to bother them having made the trip, it's a waste of their time and money. And others, guys got more than 300 tires and he can't get them picked up.
Both of us contacting them as well and also the individual garages. I want to, Counselor Wood Roberts has a floor, so.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, I have sympathy for those retailers that have their space used up and their issues with, with this, the, the companies that they choose to, to repossess, but I just propose that we, I recommend option one and to move forward on this subject.
Okay, and John, are you able to contact RIPRA yourself through Dyers Art and, okay, all right, so I, I hear option one, then do I have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Donaldson and Counselor Deputy Mayor Kennedy? So a lot of hands, I just had to pick two. We resolved that the committee of the whole receives this report and tire recycling as information and that the committee of the whole recommend that council approve one of these options being option one. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, John, for that detailed report and also for all the time it takes to contact all these garages and there you go. So that was carried, I don't know if I said that, I'm going to suggest a 15-minute break so we can all top up coffees and have our, stretch our legs. And so it is 10:40, so we'll reconvene at 10:55. Okay. Okay, so we are back in session and we'll move on to the next department, which is our Parks and Recreation. And so we'll need to bring forward Andrea Mueller and Andrew Willby. Let's give them a minute there. Oh, okay, sorry, it's Andrea there, so just Andrea. Counselor Clark's getting back with his coffee. Okay. What do we tell others? Andrea, hi?
Hi, good morning.
Morning. So you got a short and sweet report here about public skating?
I do. So public skating, it starts tomorrow. We have five sessions scheduled throughout the week. One Wednesday, two Thursdays and two on Sundays. Registration's online and we've already had people registering, so we have some people for pretty much each of the skates coming up in the, in this week. They can only register one week in advance, that's to try and make it as fair as possible to everybody so that one person couldn't go and reserve a spot for all however many sessions there are. Just that way, it's, it's a bit fair and gives people a chance who maybe don't know their schedule for the middle of December to be able to register closer to, so. If it, if we find that that's not working, then it can always be revisited and changed, but for right now, people seem to be catching on and we have, we have advertisements out there, so hopefully they see them and they, they hear about it.
Yes, I certainly, I heard it on, on canoe over the weekend and that's great. And we also said that we would look at it as if we were getting, so you said there's five, five spots over the week. Now, some of them are adults only. Does this include the shiny time?
We don't have shiny. We're not doing shiny because just to staff that and make sure that they're not close contact, so the skates are set up, so it's a 45-minute block and then there's a half-hour break for cleaning and sanitation and then another 45-minute block if it's a back-to-back session, so on Thursdays, we've had, we changed one to be public skate and one to be adult only, so that way that can, if there's people with children at home or with, that don't fall into the adult skate category, they can still participate. And then Sundays, we have two public skate times, which actually they take over a bit of what would have been shiny time. If, if it turns out that in January restrictions are eased a bit and we can offer shiny, then we'll just work the schedule a bit differently, but for now that's, this is what we decided to move forward with.
Okay. Any questions on that? Is there a possibility if we find that public skating, because people are looking for physical activities and things to do, that these times are awful, that we could add additional time slots?
We could possibly add on, like weekdays, there's some, a few spaces where we could add some time. Also Saturday night, but other than that, like Sunday, the arena is booked from 8:00 AM till 9, 10 o'clock at night, so there's no, there's no availability to add additional on Sundays or Saturday during the day.
Saturday night might be it, you know, something, something to do. Anyway, we'll see how this goes for now, so that's great. I do need a mover and seconder to receive the report. Counselor Clark, Counselor Wood Roberts? We resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the October 7th, 2020 recreation report. All in favor? And that is carried. And next we have an electronic, okay, can't speak, electronic sign policy. If you want to go over that?
Okay, so this is something I'm bringing forward. It can be altered if need be. And I also heard that the electronic sign isn't displaying currently and I think the reason why, Alyssa and I were putting, programming in a bunch of things on the, last week. And I think I didn't schedule a time for, we scheduled a date, but I didn't put a start time, so I will be going over this afternoon to correct it, to make sure that it's displaying, because otherwise it, it has been working really well. And this policy is more to do with when we get into advertising or people asking to put things on the electronic sign. Deputy Mayor, Mayor Kennedy had mentioned about having an annual advertising package a while back when we were looking at the sign. So we've taken this into consideration and built this into the policy, so there would be three spaces available. People would be able to purchase these spaces with an arena signboard package and have an advertisement that shows up. And so the plan would be that on Tuesdays and Saturdays, because those days we don't have public skating traditionally, except for holidays, they would
Oh, Andrea, you just, you, you just froze there, Andrea. So I'm not sure if her internet went. And I'm not sure if Andrea can hear me.
Also have their business so that they just get a little bit more, we said for this, $3,500 a year.
Sorry, you froze for about 10 seconds there, or eight seconds, so if you want to just repeat that.
Oh, sorry. So the annual advertising package is something that Mayor, Deputy Mayor Kennedy had proposed a while back and that would include having, purchasing a rink board sign, but then for additional amount of money, which would, we're proposing $3,500, you would get an ad showing up in rotation with the other ads that are scheduled on Tuesdays and Saturdays for the business, so let's say Foodland purchased a rink board, they could also then have, submit something that says Foodland, contact us or shop at, and it would show up on a regular rotation on Tuesdays and Saturdays for the year for that larger fee. The other advertisements, you'll see this one. The other advertisements, uh, you'll see this when we go to the fee bylaw. We're proposing a fee too, to have people display or advertise on the sign if it's a community event. And so we're, we're suggesting that people are able to purchase space on the sign, provided it's a community for a community group or for the better good of the community. Um, sorry, I've got it on a separate screen here, so I'm just trying to read, look at what some of the things. Uh, but they have to be submitted in advance and checked with municipal staff to make sure it meets the guidelines. That the, it would have to come in a PNG format, just, we've discovered that the PNG format works best for um, for visibility versus having to try and create something for the person. We want to make sure obviously that it has quality images and quality messaging. Uh, if there's too much pixelation or or not enough, it won't show up properly. Uh, we reserve the right to limit the number of events per group that that comes in at one time. Um, and we can't guarantee the number of times in a day that the ad would appear because it depends how much is being advertised and it goes through in a cyclical uh, manner. Um, we, that's, we've determined to be the easiest way to operate the sign versus saying it will appear just once a day or or twice a day. It's easier to put it into a rotation and have it come up multiple times throughout the day. For it to be submitted, it needs to have a clear connection to the municipality of Dicert and be a nonprofit or not-for-profit ba- uh, based community event. And we would require it to, at least ten days, ten business days in advance of the event to be able to put it up uh, in timely fashion. And they must pay for the advertisement prior to us posting it. So I know we've had some ads from different things. We put up, uh, that extended care was hiring. We put up some information about mental health for point in time. Those are more service oriented. Um, but if it was an event like register for the curling club, then they'd have to pay for an advertisement space. Any comments or needs to change or?
Uh, so first was uh, Councilor Donaldson, then Deputy Mayor Kennedy, then Councilor Smith. Go ahead, Tammy.
Um, just a quick question. I don't know if I missed or not, because you said that annual, or you're proposing the annual sign fee is thirty-five hundred dollars. And then that's if they buy uh, uh, inside as well. Um, so uh, do you have a fee for if somebody was wanting it for like, say, one quarter of the year?
Yeah, so the annual fee, actually, I guess maybe we should have done the fee by law first before the electronic sign policy. But um, the annual fee, the thirty-five hundred dollars, there's only going to be three spaces available because it just, to manage that and to go through that on a um, becomes a bit more challenging. So the fee to advertise, we don't have a quarterly fee or a uh, monthly fee. It's a hundred dollars per week, maximum two weeks to advertise if you're going for an ad. Now again, this is a draft fee by law and it's something that can be up for discussion. It's just, we were looking at uh, rates and what we, we know and how much it is to purchase a sign for the events board down at County Road One and Twenty-One and trying to come up with some numbers that seemed reasonable. But again, this is up to council to comment or or suggest changes.
Okay. Okay, so Deputy Mayor Kennedy, you're next.
Yeah, I just, uh, clarification please, Andrea. Announcements or events that promote a commercial interest or commercial cause. I'm not, so if I, I have a business I can still buy advertising on there, but, or can I?
If you are purchasing a business, like if you want to buy advertising for the arena board.
No.
I guess there's a bit of a gray area there, that needs to be revisited. Um, so the arena board is for businesses and for um, so that would fall into the annual advertising packages. And then I guess if your business is hosting an event, um, we can, I can change that line or take that out. It's just, we don't want somebody, we don't want to sell advertisements. I don't think, I I could be wrong. This is again, a council decision. That every week or every two weeks, we're changing it up to put in an ad maybe for I, I'm just pulling names out of my, like Curry Motors is having this take place. And then um, Rexall has a, a certain, you know, spend your money and get points event. Like, I don't know if that's quite the direction we were going in, but again, this is up to council.
Okay, that, that's what I was, actually, I was thinking about the Curry Motors Easter egg hunt was the one that came to mind. So that's a private business for promoting a community event. So it is kind of a, I I just, it's something to consider going forward as we finalize.
And if if we can change the wording for sure, because that is definitely a community event. I I agree, it's a community event. They're not, we're not advertising that they're having a big truck event. It's, it's a community event. So again, this is, this is a draft or it can be changed. It's not set in stone.
Okay, Councilor Smith, go ahead.
I, the, the same concern that Deputy Kennedy's raised. I was troubled by your, your language here, that announcements of events that promote a commercial interest or a commercial cause. You know, uh, round numbers, we spent twenty thousand dollars on a sign. And part of the justification for spending this money on the sign was that we were going to be able to generate revenue. I'm guessing that the Rotary Club and the Lions Club and uh, you know, other uh, uh, not-for-profits in the community aren't going to be prepared to spend a lot of money promoting their causes and their events on our board. Um, that it's going to be commercial enterprises that are going to be most interested in advertising. Um, and um, and so prohibiting those that promote a commercial interest or commercial cause seems inconsistent with the justification for spending twenty thousand dollars on the sign. Again, the theory was we were going to be able to recover uh, you know, much of that money over time. And I, I'd understand, um, you know, a uh, some limitations in terms of, well, we can't have it all being commercial advertising. Uh, there does need to be uh, room for promoting community events and that sort of thing. And you've got, you're talking about three thirty-five hundred dollar packages. I don't know if you've got any interest of any organization yet willing to spend that much money. Uh, but I suspect it'd be a number that would be prepared to spend a more modest amount of money promoting their commercial business. And um, and so I just didn't understand the rationale for uh, excluding that, given again vacation that had come forward when you wanted to spend the twenty thousand dollars on the site. So can we change this? Can we uh?
It's a draft. That's why we're, that's exactly what we're doing is having comment on it. I, I was actually a little surprised to see the um, the thirty-five hundred dollars and three spots. I didn't know how we'd pick or how we decide that. I, I think that the idea would be that the money wouldn't come flooding in, but would come in trickling in from community events. Uh, when you're doing a, an event and you're organizing it, you do have to spend money on advertising, whether it be in the newspapers or um, local radio stations or print uh, material as well. And this is one other avenue, whether it be, you know, you're advertising uh, the music in the park, for instance, um, and and you, there's a cost to promoting those events. So um, I'm just a little surprised at the thirty-five hundred a year uh, and the three spots available. How, how do we choose and how do we pick it, or will we get any? So I have a little question about that, but I want to hear from Councilor Clark.
Yeah, yeah, I was just thinking priority should be going to groups that are renting the space. I'm thinking like the Home and Cottage Show, for example. Um, they definitely would want to have advertising on, on the sign to promote their show. Um, some of the stuff that occurs in Head Lake, I know we're in a, we're in a bit of a um, a weird space right now with the COVID. But um, you know, I guess opportunity for the uh, the sign to be used for a promotion of of events on community or on municipal property, you know, and not necessarily say they should be getting it for free, that, those should be charges. But um, I guess what I'd, I'd want to keep away from is, you know, you know, groups like real estate and that kind of thing. They would, you know, you got some pretty deep pockets there and people who want to dominate it. And that would take away from the whole community uh, communication component. So, you know, anyways, my two cents. Thanks.
Okay, um, I'll let Andrea respond to that and can, Councilor Donaldson, you'll go next.
So I will definitely um, revisit this and re, come up with some better wording. One question, would it be fair, now this comes up on the, the next report with the draft bylaw. I had said that um, advertising for a hundred dollars per week, maximum two weeks. Would that, that might cover, if we stick with that amount, um, and the limitation of a two-week time period. Like Councilor Clark's concerns about a realtor wanting to advertise something if they're limited to a two-week increment. Um, and the other thought would be to say there's this many advertising spaces available per week. You know, the community events board down at County Road One and Twenty-One has three slots. Maybe the digital sign has X number of slots available per week. The rest is uh, reserved for, you know, public skating or if there's something happening at the landfill that we need to advertise or something within the fire department, so that it's more in-house advertising. Does that make sense or have something for discussion?
Yeah, it is for discussion. Um, Councilor Donaldson was next. Go ahead, Tammy.
Um, but how many, you, you say that there's so many in a loop. How many advertisers can you get in a loop?
Technically, we can put in as many as we want. It just becomes quite busy. When we were, had things displaying for COVID uh, in the summer months, I think we were up to ten or ten slides. I think after that, it's just, we, we can have as many slides as we want in a loop. That's, that's up to us. We can decide that. But um, I don't know what makes sense. It's, again, this is something, it's a learning experience. We're playing around with it. That's why Alyssa and I have been changing the content and trying to play with the sign a bit, just to see what works or doesn't work. And we're, we're welcome to feedback for sure.
So can, um, so if we can put in as many as we want into the loop, how much timeframe does that um, one advertisement take up? How much time is that?
Uh, we can set the amount of seconds, so it can be five seconds, ten seconds, twenty seconds. I think right now it's set to be I want to say it's set to be five seconds, but I could be wrong on that one. Um, but we, we can, or it might be eight seconds right now, sorry, eight seconds. But we have a, we can set that limit as to how many seconds each frame shows for.
Okay, my, my just comment is uh, this sign is supposed to make money for us. And if we can, we have the control of how long that advertisement's on for and how many advertisements there are. I don't think there should be a, a, it may be not be limitless, but we should be having more than ten. Because that's not even a minute of time, right? If it's only five seconds. I think you could do more than ten.
Yes, but then it'll, it'll also loop some Dicert information and whatever. And and the idea is most people are driving past it. Uh, some are walking past and and can see it. But I go back to, so I know we're looking at the two things at the same time. And yes, we talked about the sign making money uh, and having people be able to advertise. And as I said earlier, I think that the, you know, the money can come in, like, are we looking to get three thousand dollars a year? Uh, or obviously with the suggestion of three major uh, sponsors, that would increase. And while it looks good on paper and financially, we go back to the, the guidelines are that it's supposed to be not-for-profit or for-profit. It's a community event sign, so I really struggle, uh, no offense to the suggestion, but to, to have any of the that, the thirty-five hundred dollars times three looks good as revenue source, but it's not what I thought the sign was intended for. So I'd rather see us uh, keep them as not-for-profit local events. And people put those into their advertising budget, if it's Rails End doing their uh, trash and treasure. And and, you know, the hundred dollars uh, for a week is very reasonable compared to radio or print advertising. Advertising costs money and, but everybody organizing an event puts that, the, the costs into um, into factors into uh, how they're going to have a successful event. So I don't know, I, I, I know it looks good, like I said, on paper, revenue, but it's not what I thought the sign was for, so. Any other comments on that? Is this is still very much in a draft form? Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go ahead, and then Councilor Smith.
I think, I think it'd be a combination. Um, I like the idea of the, a couple, three majors for the year. I don't know whether you get any takers at thirty-five hundred, but that's to be determined. Um, I think uh, private organizations that do community events should also be considered. Uh, example that I gave was the Curry Motors Easter Egg Hunt. That's a community thing I've done by a private business. I think there's opportunity here uh, to also modify this as we go ahead. If there's no uptake, um, then we'll have to re-assess what we're doing after the huge demand for time and space. Then we've got a success. We also have to remember that, uh, I believe the original intent going way back was at some point putting another information sign up down the new Welcome Center, which may have a slightly different criteria then for events going on at the park that may be commercial in nature. And we want to promote those. Um, that, that's, I just, I guess, just keep an open mind as we go forward and uh, we can change as, as uh, conditions are, are needed.
Okay, good, good points. Councilor Smith, go ahead.
I just wanted to come back again, uh, you know, the justification for spending twenty thousand dollars to sign a, a project that was deferred um, at least once on a previous occasion, I think even multiple times on a previous occasion. The, the way this got approved was based on there was going to be a revenue stream from advertising we were going to sell. And so the suggestion now that, oh, this is meant to be a community, promoting community events solely. Uh, that's, that's not uh, the basis on which that budget was approved. And uh, um, you know, uh, at a correspondence here a few minutes ago, some, some folks on uh, Red Can Drive complaining about their road not being paved. If I recall from Rob, that was about a thirty thousand dollar project. Uh, we couldn't afford to do that, and yet we can have a sign up that we spent twenty thousand dollars on. Um, somehow, uh, we're not being very responsive to the uh, the wishes of our taxpayers. So um, I'm, I'm, I'll keep pushing. Or commercial advertising, if we could get three people signed up at thirty-five hundred each per year, terrific. You know, but yes, as Tammy said, sell advertising.
Okay, uh, so obviously difference of opinion there. Very much it was sold or decided by council that there would be a revenue stream. My point being is what is the uh, projected revenue per year? Yes, the sign costs that much and I hope not in my lifetime that it has to be replaced. So you have a twenty thousand dollar asset. Uh, what if you only, you know, if you make three to four thousand dollars a year by advertising not-for-profit or for, or non-for-profit events uh, in the community and that you bring in four thousand dollars a year. In five years, it's paid for. So I'm not suggesting that we weren't going to bring in revenue. That was totally agreed upon all the time. It's just, are you trying to bring in fifteen thousand dollars a year or are you trying to bring in a reasonable amount? Is this meant for uh, community events, not-for-profit organizations to have a reasonable uh, a of amount for a, and a advertising alternative as to other advertising methods like print and social media and and regular media? So, or do we want to make this, because right in our dis- display, it says that it's going to be for not-for-profit community-based events, but we're going to have paid advertising, like commercial advertising. Councilor Clark?
Yeah, um, I, I think we've got to be a little careful here. We, we're, we're, we're not in the advertising business. We don't want to be competing with the, and with the Highlander and with Canoe. Um, they're our community partners. But we, you know, back to what, what uh, Councilor Smith was saying, yeah, we do have a responsibility to ensure that we're at least covering the costs or investment in it. And, you know, things like the home shows and those kinds of things, there will be a, there will be a cost associated or or things that are using our facilities. There will be a cost associated of those advertising in the arena. Deputy Mayor uh, Kennedy has mentioned, you know, maybe it's an opportunity for them, for them to put some stuff up if it's community-related, what they're, what they're promoting. Um, but I, 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 I think we've got to be a little careful that we're not driving this as, as a, a revenue generator with our community partners. And um, and and it doesn't take a lot to cover off the, the, the cost of twenty thousand dollar cost. Our prime responsibility is information to our, to our community in terms of events that are happening on municipal property and municipalities. Um, that was my, what I thought was the, the intent was an opportunity to generate a little bit of income. But where this isn't a revenue, a revenue uh, generator for us, it shouldn't be a revenue generator.
Um, okay, Councilor McKechnie?
Yeah, I, I think we can talk about this for a long, 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 long time, and we have been. I, I really think that um, it should be for the community and for all our services, service commu- um, clubs and um, it, it, all, all the businesses that uh, that are, that have big functions in the park. And we should try to create a bit of money, but, but over twenty years or budgeted over uh, like, like, like figure out how much money we would, would, would pay for the sign and, and the upkeep or whatever. But this is just. But this is just a service to our community, our great community, and there's so many great things that happen in this community. And we should be promoting them all the time, and there's a great example of how we could promote it is on that sign. So whether somebody's getting uh Curry Motors Easter Hunt, sponsored by Curry Motors, big deal. Uh, he's doing a great thing for the community.
Okay, so we have, uh, okay, Counselor Donaldson?
Uh, just a quick note to that, there are a lot of great things to do in the community, whether they be a private business or a not-for-profit. And why limit one over the other if the businesses are willing to pay? Um, it tells the people going by what's going on and what they can do in the area, whether it be a private business or not. And why why not have the businesses help fund the sign?
So we have two, um, I see you, Counselor McKechnie, I'm just gonna say we have two.
Just quickly, just quickly, uh, um, like, not just what what's going on in in Dyser and in Halliburton, I mean, I mean in Halliburton. But all over Dyser, uh, something going on in Gutterham, something's going on at Cletus Lake, West Guilford. Uh, like, we we should be promoting it. The the, that's what the sign's for, for our whole community, so.
I think there's no disagreement there. Counselor McKechnie, there's no disagreement there, and that is what the sign is for, and if it was, we already, I think, agreed upon it. If it was a private enterprise like Curry Motors doing their Easter egg hunt, that is a community event. But here is the, but, do we permit? Three companies, as an example, to have exclusivity to advertise at that higher rate, and they would be advertising. I don't know why we're picking on Curry Motors, sorry for them, but anyway, we've used their name in a public domain now so far, because they do such great things, but. Do we, do we promote those companies or the ones that wanna apply at that higher rate? Because they have a board at the arena, which there are, how many boards in there? So we may have, say, a lumber company, or a car company, or a a local uh drugstore. And then they'll be going flashing across the, uh, you know. Their sales, and to me, that's that's commercial, and I'm not in favor of that, even though the dollars look good. I'd rather support, and I think have some, we will have revenue come in from community events over the years. Once we get to be able to have events again, um, it it will be successful, but it won't be coming in and drip in in large portions. So to me, having the commercial. Goes against what I thought the whole sign was about, is a community event, not telling us what's on special that week at the drugstore or the grocery store. Um, Counselor Wood Roberts?
I I think that we can make a blend of both, to be honest. At this time, there's not a lot of community events going on, so use use some space. Um, any revenue or any income garnered from the sign is is income. Uh, I think it should just be first come, first served. You, this is open, this is open, you know, do you wanna place your ad here? This is how much it's gonna cost. This is how often it'll be seen. I I think we're making it too difficult. With with too many parameters.
Okay, so there's two resolutions, because one is adopting the electronic sign policy as presented, so let's just deal with that. Uh, and go de- detail. Are there any questions on the sign policy as presented? Or is there something that uh we want to change in there? Counselor Smith?
Well, the sign policy as presented, that says, uh, you know, no, uh. No commercial interest or commercial cause, uh, would not be not allowed. Um, that's problematic in in my mind. Um, I'm fine with the suggestion that there's both there. I I'll use an example. Um, you know, we talk about a great community and and things that attract people. Um, I suspect that the uh, the single greatest attraction in Dyser in terms of drawing visitors to our community. Is the Halliburton Forest and Wildlife Center. Um, it is a commercial enterprise. It exists to make money. Nothing wrong with that. The fantastic facility. Just partnered with Yours Outdoors to do a better job of promoting the attractions they have there. And according to this policy, they won't be allowed to promote activities at Halliburton Forest. Um, that's wrong. And it's completely inconsistent with the uh basis in which this was justified. And and so to uh to put forward a motion that says we're gonna endorse this policy, um, you know, that's. It's it's completely offside. Uh, we can have both.
Okay, Andrea, go ahead.
Um, so if I were to change, like, I obviously have to rework some of the, quite a bit of the wording, but if I were to change it to say. Um, that it's it's for a community event. The advertisement for community events will be sold and just leave it like that, so it's not saying nonprofit, it's not saying commercial, it's just, if it's a community. Based event or open to the public or. Like.
A sale at Chopper's Drug Mart is a community event. Midnight Madness uh is a community event. They're there to support, uh, you know, commercial activities. I I think you gotta be less specific in terms of trying to shut these things down. Commercial events are not an evil. People making money, businesses that make money, employ people, do great things in our community. If they're, if they're prepared to spend money to get promotion on this, they're doing it because it makes good business sense to them. Let's not chase them away.
So I think what the the problem is, is that we have a um, a a policy presented to us that goes against. Uh, then the second item on the on the agenda after that is is fee structure, so. We're, if if the will of council is to accept commercial advertising on there, we have to rework the. Uh, policy. Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go ahead.
I I wonder if uh we give Andrea a chance to take a look at some of the language and bring it back at council. Uh, both both of the uh fee bylaw and the policy. I think she's almost got it. I think just some uh. Language clarification, I think she's heard loud and clear that um, there is maybe a bit of room here for flexibility. And uh, but I wouldn't be prepared to support this either, either one right now, the way it stands, either.
So Andrea, are you able to uh bring this forward in two weeks? Well, you know, at our at our meeting in two weeks, uh, so. The resolution then would only read the first sentence, that we acknowledge receipt of the October twenty twenty electronic sign policy. Um, through the clerk, I will not read the second line, will take that out, because it says approve the policy as presented. Uh, so I would say, and that the committee, the whole recommends. That new um wording be brought forward to council? Is that okay? Yes, okay, Counselor Clark?
Um, yeah, just just one last, last thing. Um, we have got some discretion on what's advertised and what's not, and and again. We would, there there's a small group or whatever, a contingent that's gonna be reviewing these requests. If we've got enough community-focused events, or things to do in the community, or things that are community benef-. Beneficial to do, to do the, to to fill the space, and that's where the priority perhaps should be. At the discretion of our small group. If it looks like we're looking, we're we, we've got space to fill, and there's some opportunity to make a few dollars, and that would be the. That would be the, you know, the 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 second tier that we go to. So all I'm suggesting, Andrea, is is within, within that, to give you some, give yourself some flexibility. Is that requests will be reviewed and prioritized. Um, you know, based on on community interests and um, you know, some revenue opportunities. That way, that way, we've got some, we've got some control on on, you know, what's benefiting the, you know, the uh, the residents of this community. Who are the ones who've paid for the sign. We haven't paid for the sign. It's our constituents that have paid for the sign. Thanks.
Okay, Mallory, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that Andrea was clear on the direction, because we kinda went in a few different directions.
Yes.
Um, Andrea, do you know what they're looking for?
I think so. I've been jotting down.
Okay.
That's why I keep looking away or looking down. I'm writing down notes as everyone's talking, so. I'm hope, I hope that I've grasped everything. I will present something to council. Again, if it's not quite right. We were trying to present it early enough so that these can come into effect for January or or sooner, so it's um. Uh, trying to make sure that there's time to still rework this and make sure everyone's happy with what's being presented.
Okay.
Okay, so that being said, then the second item, then we shouldn't even uh really discuss the draft arena bylaw by fees bylaw. Because uh they go hand in hand if we're accepting the commercial. Uh, so they'll be brought, both brought forward. Is that fair? Okay, Counselor McKechnie, do you wanna add something?
Yeah, just quickly, uh, is there any chance Andrea could uh reach out to another um area municipality? Put one of these signs up, and it's been up and running for a few years, and see how they're making it work uh for their community?
We've tried reaching out to some that we know have them. Um, some. Some of them don't do any advertising other than what's taking place in-house. Um. I can, I can try, we, we have difficult time trying to find somebody who had a blend of in-house versus um advertising. Um, like in the, and then one of the communities, the city of Markham has a whole bunch along the the corridor, but they. Have a very different marketing policy, and it's run by an outside group who advertises. And they do sell advertising space, like you drive down the four oh seven and you see Pizza Pizza up on theirs, but it's done by an external company, so I'll see if I can find somebody. Who manages things internally, in-house with some community, uh, or with communities slash commercial advertising. To see, I will, I will try again to reach out.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mallory, maybe uh back to the resolution, it ends at saying electronic sign policy, and. That staff be directed to bring forward revised draft. Policy? From, okay, is that okay? To council.
To the council meeting.
Okay. Sorry.
I also still think that we can acknowledge receipt of the draft arena fee bylaw, even though we need to change it. Just so we know that we reviewed it.
Okay, I'll just read this one. As I uh I have it, I'll read the resolution, and then we can ask for a mover second or. Here is all that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the October seventh twenty twenty electronic sign policy, and that staff be directed to bring a revised draft back to council. All right, uh, mover second or please? Uh, Counselor Clark, Counselor Smith? All in favor? That's Carrie. Um. If if there isn't time to bring it forward back to council uh for the October council meeting, then definitely by the committee, the whole meeting for November. We still have time to pass the bylaw uh to make it an effect for, then it would come to November's council meeting. And we can pass in the bylaw at the December council meeting for January one. So, you know, we all have to respect staff's time and ability to get the information when we have committee, the whole, and two weeks later, council, so. So the next one, as uh our clerk pointed out, is the arena fee, a draft bylaw, but I. The resolution also reads, we resolve that committee, the whole acknowledges received the draft arena fees by law twenty twenty for review and comment. Which we've done, we're not passing it, we're still looking at it, so is that okay to leave it stand? I'll ask for a mover second or. Deputy Mayor Kennedy and uh Counselor Wood Roberts. I've read the resolution, all in favor? Oh, question, pardon me, before I take the vote, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so the uh, the fees bylaw, you've got the fees in there related to the signage and so forth, the advertising. The uh, the rates for the ice for twenty twenty. Um, are they the same as twenty nineteen, or uh, what's the uh, what's the point there?
They are, they are the same. Initially, um, we had actually had discussions with Minden Hills back in. December of twenty eighteen, because we were going to sit down together and revisit the fees to propose a fee change for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one season. Um, then the director in Minden Hills, Mark Coleman, he left, and COVID happened. So everything, uh, we, I've been, we were in communication with the Minden Hills staff earlier in the year, um, but they wanted to wait. They didn't have the direction there. Um, so we're proposing that the fees remain the same for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. But that we revisit them, and there will, we we will suggest that there should be a fee increase, and we're looking at a model where maybe it increases. In a certain increment so much each year, over maybe a five-year period, or or that we have um. It built in, because some of our fees are definitely more reasonable in some of the neighboring communities. Our summer ice falls somewhere in the middle. Um, but we we have indicated to user groups uh who are inquiring about fees, that there will. To anticipate a fee increase for the twenty twenty-one season. Um. The reason why I put this forward is because we never had a rate for a public uh, public skating sponsorship. We just charged the hourly rate. But I'm recommending, we'll discuss this when this comes forward again, was to how the uh, public skating rate, that's consistent. So that even on weekends or holidays, um, we're charging a certain, the the premium amount versus charging the seventy-five dollars an hour. Weekday rate during Christmas holidays. So, uh, and this includes some advertising with the digital sign, but that can come forward later.
A good point, just grab the ice times on there. All right, and and just, John, before you, I just wanna say, other years when we have uh passed. Um, and changed ice uh rates, we have done it sometimes in the spring. Uh, like effective starting the hockey season. If you will, hockey skating season. So we've done them effective like September first, we we can review it in uh. February, March, or April. So it doesn't have to be starting on the calendar year, it's when, so that they can work it into their fee structure for. Uh, for those different organizations. So sometimes we've done it where it's effective September first. And that's why.
We haven't discussed it recently, though. Uh, in terms of, you know, uh, apparently staff has had discussions with Minden Hills, and because the individual in Minden Hills is no longer there. They didn't pursue the conversation. Is that correct, Andrea?
That's correct, but the conversation about ice fees did come up at one of the emergency control group meetings. And the emergency control group had said to keep it the same for for the time being, and that we can revisit it, so that's why it didn't come to. A council meeting. It was discussed. Cause I I asked the question about raising the fees for this, for this year, and they said, and most communities, just to give you some um. Background, majority of communities around the area, and including like even in the GTA, Hamilton, those areas have kept their arena fees. Uh, static or the same for this year, with the thought of increasing for. The start of the the ice season next year, which, as Andrea pointed out, usually it takes effect. To start for either the summer, when the summer ice goes in, or when um minor hockey starts up in September.
So.
Yeah, well, I I guess, uh, you know, my concern, reason I asked is that, uh, um. You know, I know, I know there's a sensitivity surrounding this, but the hourly rates for our winter ice rentals. I'll use the eighty dollars per hour for minor hockey in the skating club. Um, maybe some places haven't increased their rates, but when you said, you mentioned. If I was to go to most of my constituents and they, and said, uh, hey, your kids play hockey in the GTA Dell, eight dollars an hour, they'd say, well, I guess you're getting an outdoor ring for that. Um, you know, they're paying three and four hundred dollars an hour for their ice time for the hockey leagues down there. And uh, um, you know, and I know that with hockey, there's always that, well, some people can't afford it. Uh, that's true, and there needs to be a program to support those that have that participation for those who can't afford it. We have lots of people in our community who are having great years in terms of being well-paid. And um, and so, uh, for us to just simply say, well, we're not gonna increase rates when they're already so low. Um, that's the, that's the challenge. We've got an arena that the net operating cost, the net operating cost. After our revenues, it's half a million dollars a year. Um, and um, and so.
Hey, so, John, just so you know, just to cut you off there, the resolution, which I did have moved by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. And Nancy Wood Roberts simply says for review and comment. So I think Andrea is hearing that we'd like perhaps a report back and. It in time that does not mean, we're not passing any bylaw, we're not changing any fees at this time. So all we have done is review and comment, and if you could um, uh, do some. Uh, in investigation in terms of uh, what other fees are, we have looked at comparisons before, and we can review this. In the new year, absolutely, or well, we'll still have to uh pass it. We will pass it when we get the arena sign sorted out. But then we can revise it again in the new year, uh, and look at that, okay? So, um, I did, uh, Counselor McKechnie?
Yeah, I I think that um, that last lecture we just got, uh, we're all very aware of all those uh facts. And um, I think Andrea answered the question before the lecture started. Because she said that she checked with a lot of other um, uh, municipalities, and they weren't raising their rates. So I mean, this is a tough time that we're in here today. And to um, raise rates at this time, to me, is totally, totally wrong. Um, that's the, that's the least of our worries right now. That's the, that's the least of our worries right now, believe me.
Okay, so we're not, we're not here really right now to have a to- total philosophical discussion.
I just got lectured for five minutes on something that I knew.
So, let's, let's stay civil and, um, uh, hopefully we can stay civil for the remainder of the meeting. Um, I have, we have a mover second, I've read the le- resolution, all in favor? Okay. So we do need to stick, when we're speaking to the subject, we do need to stick to the topic, uh, when, when you're raising your hand, please stay focused. Um, so Andrea, thank you very much, that's everything there, okay, that's great, we'll move on to, uh, the museum director's report. Just bringing in Kate.
Hello, how's everyone doing?
Good, how are you?
Fantastic.
Okay, go ahead, you've got your, uh, report was included in our package?
Yep, so, um, certainly we're seeing visitors still coming through the museum this autumn, although I mean, it's been a strange year. Um, but I think definitely in terms of our, even our greater tourism sector. Um, a lot of people are discovering what's in their own backyard this year, so I think we're going to see a lot of long-term benefits. Out of this unusual year, um, and as one visitor said to me, um, just actually over the weekend. Um, they were brand new to discovering Halliburton County and they said it was like walking in a dream. So. Um, yeah.
So any questions on to Kate's report? Uh, just, uh, some follow-up, you don't need to answer the, now, but maybe, uh, for council is just to find out what's happening with, um. The installation of the, uh, it says, work is underway to complete the next steps, but, uh, when can we expect the, that of the steam engine?
Yeah, it's, um, yeah, we're working on that, so I can certainly provide an update about that as we go, yeah.
So there's the two things, the steam engine, what's the one that's right beside the museum proper?
That's the engine and then the mill is the one down the road.
Then what's happening with the mill?
The mill, truth be told, has been on hold, um, just because. Um, the volunteers who have the expertise to help us, um, with that. Are, they're gentlemen in their eighties and nineties and with the whole situation with COVID. Uh, my priority this year has been, has been keeping them safe, um, so yes, that's been a, a bit on hold. Um, for this year, unfortunately.
Okay, I, I walked through there an awful lot and it does look like a work in progress. And it's looked like work in progress for a while, so you know, if, if it comes that we can't rely on volunteers, we need, we have an obligation to complete that project, so, um. Uh, you know, some with COVID, yes, but we also have to move on to it, it, it doesn't look very, uh, good, I have to say. So, uh, there's a motion to receive the October, uh, Halliburton Highlands Museum report. If I could. Councillor Wood Roberts and councillor McHekney. Here is all that the committee, the whole knowledge received the October Halliburton Highlands Museum report, all in favor? And that is carried, thank you, thank you Kate, thank you. And we'll move into, uh, building and bylaw. So, we'll bring, uh. Carl and Robert are come, joining us in the meeting. Look at that, we have parking meter revenue, what do you know? Kind of nice after seeing a whole lot of zeros, right Barbara? Hi, Robert, how are you? And Carl, welcome, um, so the first step is your report, Robert, if you want to speak to that. Just unmute? Hey, go ahead, Robert. Robert, can you hear me? Yeah, it's, it's showing, uh, it's showing that you're unmuted, but you're not, we don't hear you. So, um, what we're going to do is send some IT down your office, so, uh, hang tight. And we'll ask Carl to, uh, report on the building permit report, which like, oh my gosh, another bumper month. So Carl, if you want to report on the building permits.
Sure, um, yeah, a lot of permits issued again in September, um. Is that, yeah, like you said, another bumper month.
I think the number to look at is the, the major residential. At, at twenty-eight, that's a whole new, that's a, that's a new home build, isn't it?
Well, so, uh, major residential is anything over fifty thousand dollars construction value.
Okay, so, so sort of big renovations.
Yeah, I, I think there was, uh, there was sixteen new houses, uh, issued in September.
Okay, well, still, it's, it's fantastic and it bodes well for, um, our community and for Dyserd and for the county that people are investing in their properties here and. Um, so that, that's great, so any comment on the building permit report? Councillor Clark gave a thumbs up, so I'll just have a mover second or to accept your building permit reports, councillor Clark. A second or a councillor, uh, Wood Roberts. Here is all that the committee, the whole knowledge has received the September twenty twenty building permit report, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you Carl, and now Robert, we'll go back to you and see if, uh, we can hear you. And we still can't. Nope, so, uh, hang tight, stay in your chair, um. Let's just. Go to the big meaty one, which is the septic reinspection RFP. And so Carl, that's to you.
So the, uh, the RFP, um, so again, the, the, the main. Parts to focus on the RFP, it's a big document, but the main parts to focus, as I mentioned, the report is, uh, section two. Review and section three, which is the scope of work, so that's basically the meat and potatoes of it, what we're getting for, um. Uh, as value for the, uh, for the RFP. Um, I did bring that, it's very, it's changed, uh, very little from the version that I brought to, uh. The environment committee, um, back, uh. Last February, I believe. Um. I don't, I, I don't, uh, I don't expect any councillors to read the whole thing, uh. Fully, but, uh, if anybody has comments on it.
Okay, and I appreciate the time, uh, frame put in there, um, so December fifteenth, that must be our, uh, December council meeting. Date. Maybe I'm not looking at the calendar ahead, I can't look at it while I'm on the phone, but anyway, it said, did to, so to be beginning, uh. For next year, um. So there is a resolution to, uh, accept receipt and to move forward with the septic reinspection program, is there any, um. Comment councillor Clark, and then councillor Smith, then deputy mayor Kennedy, councillor Clark, go ahead.
I don't know, no, I, I support it, I think we, we need some resources to be able to drive this forward and I think, you know, what, what Carl's proposing here is a good way to go about it.
Okay, and Deputy Mayor Kennedy is next and then councillor Smith, go ahead.
Uh, just a clarification, Carl, page thirteen, item number six, uh. Including a site location drawing for those properties which do not contain a septic permit, uh, we're, we're replacing those anyways, uh, why is that necessary?
So, we're not replacing them.
Um, is that what it says on page eleven? If, man, unless, I'm sorry, that's a pump up, my mistake, yeah, I'm, sorry. Uh, late night reading.
I don't even know where you are, uh. Okay, um, I know I attended the, uh, uh. L K O, Crochet, Wig, Mok, oh, we've all frozen. We've all frozen. So not sure if anyone can still continue to hear me, so I believe we have it.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, that's good, thank you Mallory, we have it in our procedural bylaw, the, in, the event of technical difficulty, which we're having right now. Because I can see you all in your frozen smiley faces, we're going to take a ten minute. Just mine, just mine, okay, apparently, uh, but it will make it more challenging for me to be able to see a raise of hands. I can hear you. Well, what do you know, so, uh. This is fun, I can see someone else's screen. Uh, although, no, everybody still looks, I don't know, some people are moving. Oh lordy, bear with me, I'll be very glad when we can meet in person again, I'll have to say, it's a hard challenge, chairing a meeting like this. So, uh, I'll look at another screen, so you get to see the side of me, um, we did hear, uh. Deputy Mayor Kennedy, and I know that councillor Smith, you are next with a question or comment, and go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, um, so, um. I, Carl, I did read the whole report and I've got a number of, uh, of questions, comments, but before we get into the, the details of the RFP itself. Um, I was curious about the, uh, the plan for, uh, public consultation. Uh, regarding, uh, this process in RFP. Um, last spring, uh, we received, um, you know, more than twenty letters from individuals who were concerned about the proposed change. Um, those haven't been, uh, uh, received at a council meeting, uh, yet. Um, you know, there were commitments made to the lake associations and the CHA last spring. That they'd have an opportunity to, uh, provide some input, uh, regarding this matter. Um, Carl and his team have completed, uh, some of the delinquent inspections, uh, from area one. Um, we haven't had any report as to, uh, their progress in that respect and the failure rates that, uh, that they identified. Um, at the environment committee meeting that, uh. Um, Carl mentioned back in February, we had an extensive report from, uh. Uh, Mike Ramy of, uh, Home Pro, uh, regarding, uh, his perspective and, and we again, haven't received that here at a, at a council level. Uh, because there was to be a public consultation process of some type and, uh. And so, uh, I guess Mayor Roberts, you're one of the ones that talked about the public consultation. How can we go ahead and release this RFP prior to, uh. Um, uh, giving those various stakeholders an opportunity to, uh, to kind of weigh in on this.
So, is that a question for me or for Andrea?
You know what, Carl, I, I have no idea, so I'm going to leave it with the clerk.
I, I, I just, I wanted to mention to Robert that we can hear him, okay, he's disappeared again, I just don't want him to keep talking and not know that we can all hear him.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sorry, that was just a, uh, and. In terms of the letters, what the, we received back at the environment committee meeting, is that what you're talking about, John?
Yes.
Well, there were letters that, um, I don't think they were even received at the environment committee meeting, I think that a number of those letters were sent to councillors. Uh, after the last environment committee meeting, uh, but they haven't, uh, for whatever reason, they haven't, uh, been received. Although they were addressed to all members of council, they haven't been received, uh, you know, at a council meeting, they haven't been received by the committee of the whole. Um, and, um, and it seemed to me before we, uh, uh, before this committee could, uh. Uh, recommend that, uh, you know, council move forward with the RFP process. Um, those people who took the time to provide some input and opinion, uh, deserve, uh. Um, to have the, their expectation that those would be considered. Um, you know, we ought to be receiving those letters, they ought to be on our agenda, people ought to be, uh, you know, they're, they're, they're part of the public record. Um, and, um, you know, as I said, uh, there were commitments made around public consultation, how can we issue an RFP? Uh, with this level of detail, uh, prior to engaging in public consultation regarding a change to the bylaw.
So we can definitely bring those letters forward to be received, I believe they were coming in right before COVID had hit and then. This process was put on hold during that, um, so I have no issue doing, we can find those and put them in a package to be received. If that.
Yeah, I think, so, uh, we're committed to hold today, so what we do is we, we have discussion, which we're having right now. We would make a recommendation back to ourselves, so I would suggest then at our, and then the, uh. Uh, pardon me, I lost my train of thought there, um, so that the letters, uh, could come back to the October council meeting. Uh, as well as with the, um. Bylaw, so it can all be discussed then, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult because we do receive things, uh, sometimes addressed to me. I'm very cognizant to make sure that they get sent back to Mallory to, and through her to go out to all of the other councillors. Sometimes an individual councillor gets something, sometimes the, a person takes the time to individually, uh. Email each of us or put us in an email group, I do feel that, uh, and I'll hear from other councillors that we. Did have access to that information in the spring and had some fulsome discussion over it, not just at the, uh, environment committee, but at council. Uh, so, anyway, can you hear from some other councillors, uh?
Well, I, I just, my question to you, is there going to be a public consultation process regarding this change, or is this, uh? Uh, council's made up its mind, we don't care what the public, we don't care what the lake associations have, we don't care what the CHA thinks about this, we're just going to go ahead. Or we're not, we're not going to have public consultation, is that what we're saying?
I think, uh, when you say that we don't care is very, um, uh. Un, untrue, we care, we're coming up to our own conclusions and that's what council's all about. We can, we have information and we make decisions, it's got nothing to do about whether we care or don't care, we'll make decisions based on the information that we have. And our comfort level, we make the decision as a group, so it is not that we're not paying attention to what's happening in the public or what, what. What individuals have, uh, whether they've written to us or called us or however it's appeared. So don't say that we don't care, we're making our best educated decision at the time as a group. So.
But there was a, there was tremendous, uh, um, you know, for, for twenty people to send individual letters, it was considerable. A discussion, um, from lake associations this past spring on this topic just before COVID hit. And I understand that you committed, uh, Mayor Roberts, to lake associations, that there would be a public consultation process. In this regard, and, and maybe, maybe they're misinterpreted what you said, but I was told.
I think it's a misinterpretation, this is, we're, this is a public meeting, people are watching this meeting right now, this is a public process, this is public. Right now, so I'm not sure, and if, if I've said something to misinform people, uh. Or, or if I prompt, made a promise, I'm, uh. You have to, if I do, I apologize, I feel that this is a public process, this is exactly what we're doing. So I'd like to hear from some other councillors, if they are comfortable having those letters come to the October council meeting. Be included in our package as well as the final draft that we would adopt, either this RFP or we would ask for more clarification. So with a raise of hands, one at a time, if there's councillor Clark, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I thi- I think if we can get the, uh, the letters into the, uh. Next meeting, so we can review it and have further discussion. Um, as a council, we've got to try and move this thing forward to. To start up a, a, a long public process, where you're, you're going to add another year on this thing, John, before people. Before we start getting some inspections done, you know, we've got to be able to move forward and also we can tweak it as we go forward if it's not working, but. There's, there's some urgency on, on putting the resources in place and pros- and, and policy in place. So at least we can get some work, get things moving forward and do our job, it's, it's irresponsible to, to. Add more administravia on the thing, so nothing goes forward.
Is there any other councillors that wish to speak on this, are you comfortable with the suggestion that, uh, the letters be included in our package? Okay. Okay, so I need a resolution to receive this report? Councillor Smith, one last time.
Uh, you, look at, uh, you've declared there will be no public consultation, um, you know, so be it.
Me councillor Smith, this is public process, I did not, I am sorry, I'm not going to argue with you, is there any other comment? Or suggestion, the discussion is closed, I'm looking.
Well, it actually, uh, I, I had a number of.
Or, you do not have the floor councillor Smith.
Well, I, I've got a number of questions about the report that I wanted to raise, as I mentioned when I started.
Are they unique to the report?
Uh, yes, they're, they're specific to the report and the RFP. May I ask these questions?
Your question, please.
So, uh, on, uh, page eight of the. on, uh, page eight of the, uh, of the, uh, RFP document, uh, the fourth line from the top of that document, uh, that sentence doesn't make any sense.
So it's got the extra RE in front of the require.
Well, even if you.
I think it should be be, will be required.
Oh, maybe, yeah.
Will be required and required would be, uh, past tense, to check a box for acceptance of a demand. That, that makes grammaticals.
Okay, I can review that for sure.
Thank you.
On, uh, page eight, the, uh, on section 1.12, there's a discussion there about the, uh, you know, we do not want to, uh, engage a proponent who doesn't have satisfactory evidence of possessing the ability to experience, uh, with this class of work, sufficient capital, plant resources. Uh, there's also later in the document, extensive information regarding insurance requirements that have to be addressed with the submission. Uh, I would highlight to, uh, uh, council that, uh, that will really eliminate any local service provider. We don't have a, uh, an inspector in Dizart that has the scope. We're really heading down a road here where we would be engaging a corporation like WSP, just as Elgonquin Highlands and Minden Hills have done, and, uh, and exporting billion dollars worth of work. Ironically, in the same meeting where the Chamber of Commerce has come forward and said how important it is that we, uh, uh, we keep working house. On that page 10, Carl, uh, your, uh, your overview there said anticipated to commence the program in 2020, uh, and anticipated to be completed within six years. I'm imagining that, given that this was written in the spring, it's really commencing in 2021?
Yes, yes, you're correct on that.
It over the six years out to 2026. Your criteria doesn't really speak about, uh, speed other than in this particular area. Does, if somebody can complete it more quickly than six years, do they get extra marks in your evaluation? If they say, I've got the resources to do this job in four years, is that something that you're interested in?
That, that's something that, yeah, that's one of the point systems that goes across it. So their work plan, when they submit their RFP, they're gonna provide their work plan that lays out their timeline. So that gives them additional points that they can complete it in less, less, uh, time.
Shouldn't you then call that out as a, uh, as something you're interested in? Because nowhere in this document do you say that it would be desirable. It would be to your advantage in terms of scoring if you can do this job in less than six years.
Uh, so the schedule of completion is one of the criteria where they get awarded points.
But it doesn't say the criteria by which you order points. If you make it clear, hey, if you can do it better in four years as opposed to six years, you'll get more points.
Yeah. I, I think our, our, our goal there was definitely to have it done within a lesser, lesser period of time. So if somebody had four years and everybody else had five years, the one with four years, we get the more, the, the, the full points.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just recommending that you make that clear in the document.
Yeah, we could, uh, we could add verbiage, uh, within that overview to.
On, uh, on page 11, uh, you note there in the second paragraph, the first priority would be to complete area number one.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot to take that out as well, yeah.
Oh, so that doesn't, that should be removed?
Yeah.
Because we chose to complete area one ourselves.
Well, I just, uh, I thought we were supposed to review and approve an RFP and I was just pointing to these things in it that didn't seem to make much sense. On the same page there, uh, further down on that page 11, you, uh, you talk about the, uh, the property owner shall ensure that a qualified septic hauler provides confirmation of approximate tank size and the condition, uh, which is going to be submitted to the contractor for review. And qualified goes on to be described as, uh, as the pump driver code identification number, uh, with onsite sewage system qualifications. I don't know how, uh, a property owner is going to be able to make that assessment. Most property owners wouldn't know what a BCIN number is, let alone the onsite sewage qualifications. And I'm wondering if it would make more sense for you, given that septic haulers aren't gonna come up from Cadham or Watford or some far place, they're gonna be, uh, local, whether they come from Dizart, Halliburton County, or even North Werther. Could you not put together a list and say, these are the qualified, um, septic haulers? And they've got DCIN numbers and onsite sewage system qualification? Because as a property owner, I don't believe a property owner has that.
It may be something that we work on in conjunction with, uh, with this program is, is that type of, uh, component where we talk about the, um, you, you know, the, the qualifications for, for septic tank. You know, it's, it might be a discussion we need to have with the tank pumpers, making sure that they understand what their requirements are if they're in the business of hauling pumping out septic tanks. It's a component that we can work in, uh, in tangent with this, uh, with this program.
Just don't think you could delegate that responsibility to, uh, a homeowner? Because they, they don't have the ability to do that.
Yeah, yeah, and again, this, this, uh, yeah, this review is part of the, the whole program. I understand what you're saying. It's actually not really a component that should be in the RFP because it has nothing to do with the, with the, um, successful proponent. Uh, it's actually has to be owner's responsibility.
Well, I understand, but it's in your RFP. Yeah, I'm just providing feedback on what you gave us to review. On, uh, page 12 of the, uh, of the RFP, it refers to an educational component. And it says owners are to be provided with adequate information on proper usage and maintenance, blah, blah, blah. Um, adequate information is not a defined term in your document. And, uh, I'm curious as to how we'll know, uh, whether that information is adequate? What does that, what does that mean? If I'm bidding in response to your RFP, what is, what is my obligation there? Do I say to the homeowner, we'll go on Google septic maintenance? That'll do the job? Make sure you Google that later this afternoon or what is adequate information?
Yeah, I think that's something that we'll have to determine. Um, what do they propose, what do, what do they provide, uh, propose to provide? You know, which is, uh, as, uh, educational material about their septic system. There's a lot of material that's, uh, comes from the ministry itself. We put together something not too long ago with, went out with the tax bills. And, uh, you know, something along those lines, something to leave the, uh, the owners. Again, it, it adequate information would be what we would consider adequate, the, the building department could be considered adequate. So we'd wanna know what they're giving out at the time of inspection as well. So a lot of misinformation going on out there as well. When I attended one of the, uh, information sessions, um, one of the Lake Associations, they had something about, uh, don't you uh, fabric softener, uh, that makes, that, that's a component that, or that's bad for septic, where there's no studies that show it's bad for septic. So there's a lot of misinformation out there as well. We just wanna make sure that there's no misinformation put out, um, as well.
All right, well, just my suggestion is that you provide some description related to adequate or definition because otherwise, uh, you know, it'll mean, it's the same thing on page 13.
So John, to just stop you there.
You.
John.
Pardon me?
Just a minute, just on that note still, I think that's part of the purpose of the RFP is then we see when the people bid and the companies bid on this, then we evaluate what they determine and we can, then council will be, uh, choosing and seeing all the different, uh, bids, if you will. And so we can see, oh, this company said that, that company's gonna do it this way. So that's, I, I don't know that we need to define that too much at this point. We, we'll analyze, uh, when we get those bids in.
Well, and, uh, and so Mayor Roberts, that's a reasonable approach. But we should ask them then to provide an example of the adequate information that they're gonna communicate and how they're gonna do that communication to property owners. Otherwise, how will they know what to include in their bid in that respect? It's just like under, uh, enforcement. On page 13, uh, we say that, uh, letter and order, ordering requiring measures to be completed within a reasonable timeframe. Some people might say a reasonable timeframe is three days. Somebody else might say it's three months. Um, you know, as the party's responsible for it, it seems to me we should be defining what a reasonable timeframe is. We want this done within, for whatever we think is, uh, appropriate.
So, so adequate timeframe for that would depend on the situation. Why, why are we issuing that order? So what's a reasonable to have a septic system replaced compared to a reasonable timeline to, to correct a, um, to, to repoint, uh, um, the outlet on your pipe? You know, those are two completely different scenarios. Depends on the situation. So the way that the building is awarded is reasonable timelines. We, we wanna make sure that they're reasonable timelines. And, uh, you, you know, if there's any discrepancy between reasonable timelines, those are conversations that we're gonna have with the successful proponent, uh, contractor when, when, when they're done. Uh, so there's gonna be a lot of dialogue back and forth. It's not just they're gonna bid on this and, and that's it. They're, this is what they're bound by. There's a lot of dialogue that goes on in between them.
So would it make sense for you to define reasonable timeframe?
No.
Or provide some examples?
We wouldn't, no.
Counselor Wood Roberts?
I started some more questions, but.
You can go.
I just had a response to one of John's questions, actually.
Thank you.
In, in the enforcement action part, it does say that the letter ordering are going to be forwarded to the building department for review and then we will decide how quickly that needs to be fixed. Would you not, Carl? When there was a significant issue with a tank, you're going to get that information fairly quickly?
Yeah, I, I don't see why we wouldn't. And so when there's, you know, significant issues, then yeah, we're, we're definitely gonna be involved in.
And you're going to be the enforcement body, correct?
Uh, let me just.
Their action, their, their enforcement is identifying the measures or options to owners and then they follow up to you. And then you would be the, the actual enforcement body to make sure that those actions are corrected.
Yeah, so, I mean, they would be sending out the orders and, um, requiring that, that they be complete within a reasonable time. Um, so, so again, they're gonna be appointed building inspectors, um, to, to do this work. So they're, you know, they're, they're gonna be following through with their own orders.
Yes, as building inspectors, they're gonna do enforcement, are they not?
Yep, I'm not, I'm not concerned with the, with the way that that's left with, uh, within a reasonable timeframe.
Okay. So, other comments?
On, uh, page 15, uh, Carl, item G there. It said the contractors will provide a list of all controlled hazardous materials or products containing hazardous materials, blah, blah, blah. Um, I, I don't see how that's applicable to somebody doing septic inspections.
It's, it's common verbiage for whemis.
So even though it doesn't apply, we're just leaving it in?
Well, no, they might have cleaners that they clean their tools off with that contain hazardous substances. We, we need that, it's a part of whemis.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I was curious about, uh, uh, 4.9 on page 19, we've got a smoke-free workplace um, covering cigarettes, e-cigarettes and cannabis use. I wanted to confirm that, uh, the Occupation and Health and Safety Act would, uh, would cover, uh, employees of the contractor with respect to the influence of alcohol, uh, marijuana, or even illegal drugs. Because we don't seem to cover that anywhere. So I want, does that get covered under the Occupation and Health and Safety Act? The prohibition against those activities?
So you're talking about the inspectors?
Like, yeah, the contract personnel.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
We tell them they can't smoke, uh, but, uh, we don't say anything about, uh, they can't be, uh, uh, in, under the influence of marijuana or some illegal drug or alcohol.
Okay. How, how far do you take it? Like, we don't, can't stunt drive to the workplace either, like, we're not like, there's legal definitions, uh, you know, legal activity. I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm actually gonna turn to Tamara because of her HR, uh, background and, uh, I don't know this.
Yeah, I just, I'm surprised you said we, we focus on they can't smoke.
Sure.
But we don't mention all those other things.
That's Mary, who want to comment?
I, I think that's there because it's probably just one of the most common things that people would notice because it's, smoking has been legal in public for a long time. So it's something that people focus on. But I don't think it's appropriate to include all of the things like no drinking, no this, no that. It, it's an obvious common sense, it's part of health and safety. You don't go to work drunk or high. And you wouldn't if you're a contractor either.
So Carl, the only, um, comment that I wanna make back is it goes way up at the top, which is the timeline. Uh, and I just got my calendar out. So I forget what page that's on right at the beginning. Sorry, I didn't come to it. Since issue date of RFP is October 23rd, but our meeting for Dizart Council is not until October 27th. And in light of the fact that we discussed earlier that we wanted the letters received and, um, I'm looking at revising this, uh, resolution that's in front of me, uh, that say that, um, at the end, because we've all had the resolution in our package and further that the committee will recommend that staff, um, uh, bring forward to council for final review. So at our next council meeting. So I, I think we'd have to change the date of the RFP of October 23rd to October 28th, which, um, may bump up that.
Yeah, we can look at that for sure.
You know, there's been some suggested typos here and there and a little bit of wording change here and there. So instead of, that we move forward with the septic reinspection RFP, that we bring it back to council for a final, uh, final review or recommendation on October 20, would I just say 27? So that the RFP could go out on the 28th. And so the timeline might need to just be altered ever so slightly for fairness. Any other comments from any other counselors?
I had a few more, uh, topics here yet, actually.
Okay, just making sure that everyone's having ample time to comment. So go ahead, Counselor Smith.
So on, uh, page, uh, 24, uh, you, uh, you list out the evaluation criteria uh, and the number of points that are, uh, uh, assigned to each totaling 92. You have there the schedule of completion for 15, or maximum 15 points. Um, again, and, and the same thing about, uh, some of the other topics here, contingency plan, for example, at six points. And I can talk about pricing in a second, but it, it seems to me some definition of what the ideal, uh, response looks like in each of these categories would be, uh, appropriate, uh, RFP content. Otherwise, as a bidder, I'm, I'm kinda just guessing. Right now, you've just got a phrase with no, no really description of it.
This is, is this not, Tamara and, uh, Mallory, when we see other bids on different things, like even with our service delivery review, we don't describe it in detail. We determine it'll state quality and experience of team. We don't have to say what all that means.
No, and that's why, that's why it's a proposal versus a tender. It's left it open for the firm to, uh, provide that, uh, qualification. Uh, qualification and uh, describe and give those value-added options if they. Think of something creative that can be done to make this a better process or. Whether their work plan is more unique and offers something better, like those are the kind of things that. You have room to discuss in there. I don't think, I think it's fine the way it's written.
So I'll go back to my earlier point about uh, schedule of completions worth fifteen points. What, how do I, as a bidder, know what that means? I can do all these in one year. Is that better than doing it in five years? How much value do you attach to that?
Well, fifteen points. So probably, probably someone said I can do that in a year and we believe them. Because I'm not sure that how anybody could, then they probably get fifteen in this, but you have to, you know, we did put in a six-year timeframe. So. Um, if someone said that they could do it in six years, uh, would they also get fifteen? Um, I, I'm not sure. Uh. How, how that would get weighted. Um. Past experience in other municipal projects, again, that's, that's an interesting one and. I, I liken it to when we review this, this, the service delivery review and we, we, we had discussion. In closed session because it was prepared to ship or whatever that's called. Sorry, uh, Tamara, go ahead.
Perhaps we take out the point values and just simply say the criteria will be based on the evaluations will be based on quality and experience of team. Staff size, past experience, contingency plans, schedules, work plan. And then it's not defining anything. It's saying, tell us what you're going to do and we're going to evaluate based on those criteria, not necessarily the. Uh, the scheduled completion is fifteen, but maybe that scheduled completion describes. A really great way to do it and that's worth fifteen. And another one just meets the target of. Six years and doesn't do anything to try and go beyond or make it better. So maybe they only get twelve. But I think that's where maybe it does get rid of the points and you're evaluating it based on those criteria. That's one option.
Yeah, and there's that common one that you just do, there's, there's three things that it, it uh, it. Doesn't meet the criteria, it meets it, or it exceeds it. So there's only three options in each thing. It, it doesn't, so if they said, for instance, and uh, someone a bid on this and they said a scheduled completion is eight years, they are not meeting the criteria. Someone else put a schedule, I can do it in four, that's exceeding the criteria. Someone else said six, that's meeting it. So maybe we do that in the, the three levels uh, as opposed to numbers.
I think it's something Carl and I can have a look at it and bring it back because that's.
Well, we are going to be bringing it back. That's why, so we've got to change the timeline on that. So we can have the letters and we can. Uh, have the different corrections made throughout. Um. So what other counselors feel about the sort of the three levels as opposed to just a number beside the thing that they meet, they don't meet the criteria, they need it or they exceed it? That's okay. Okay, so let's try that view or that uh. As opposed to numbers. Which I still think is, is weighting it, if you will. So it is going to come back with the revisions and um.
Uh, sorry, uh, Mayor Roberts.
At the end.
Um, on page thirty, appendix F is the fee schedule. And uh, goes it uh, for each uh, two-year period, uh, but it only has one rate in it. Um, and uh, as is noted throughout the RFP, uh, we have quite a number of septic systems located on islands. Uh, and on water access-only properties. Um, you know, if you were ordering a load of building materials. Um, the, the delivery cost to a water access or island would be higher than it would be uh, for something that's located in a road. And so I was wondering if we should allow for two different rates uh, for those properties that will have those added costs associated with it. I also wondered if maybe there, you'd, you'd say the owner is responsible for uncovering the lids. We know from past experience with inspections, not every owner will do that. And so maybe we could ask these uh, contractors, these uh, bidders, provide an hourly rate. In some cases, the homeowners won't even know where the septic tank is located and somebody will have to find it. Um, and there ought to be a cost for that, that is borne by the owner. Who's not I, I able to uncover those lids themselves or find the septic tank. Um, you know, uh, we know there'll be situations where owners fail to show up for the scheduled inspection time. Uh, why wouldn't we have a defined rate that, okay, if you, if that happens? You as a consultant can charge a hundred dollars or whatever it is they decide is reasonable. Otherwise, everybody's bearing the cost of this uh, of this bad behavior.
Yeah, no.
I'd like to see more granularity in a pricing schedule.
Tamara, go ahead.
I, I was going to say, I, I think the basis for keeping one cost is simplicity. The company that we hire is going to have to do all properties, whether they're lakefront or. Wherever it won't be a priority. If they're in that area, they're going to do those islands. Um, so therefore they're going to have to have a look at the data that they can see and see how much they think it's going to cost. For the whole system when they factor in getting access to some of those more remote, remote locations. I think in terms of lid removal, people have to remove their lids now to get their septic tanks pumped. I've seen lots of people too where they don't know where it is and the septic bumper shows up and has to turn around and leave because there's no, they can't. Get out it. So people very quickly learn, or they can also hire a third party to remove, to expose their lids if they wanted to. I'm not sure what Algonquin Highlands does when people don't show up or don't have their lids. Removed, ready for the inspector. Do you know, Carl?
I don't know.
Um, I, I know from somebody that lives there, when they receive their letter to have their inspection, it clearly stated, we are coming on this date. And this is what you as the homeowner must do. The lids have to be exposed, so they had to be. Shovel or dug out and exposed and somebody needs to be on site. If you cannot do this, please call our company to make arrangements for a different date. If you do not call our company and we arrive, we will be billed and it was the full amount. And we will schedule a second one. So they are a hundred percent, the cost is borne on the homeowner. They receive that letter. Uh, and so I would imagine in an RFP, that'll be laid out for us when, what companies and how they address. Non-compliance or someone doesn't have their lids ready to expose or if somebody uh, is not home or however they word it, there's definitely a charge.
And, and that's what I'm suggesting, that that be defined as part of their RFP response. So we get that documented.
The, the fees would be worked out in the building or the, the septic reinspection bylaw, the fees scheduled for that.
Okay, Counselor McKechnie?
Yeah, for the last twenty minutes, I've heard what if, what if, what if we lived in a perfect world?
I think good qualified companies have done this before and, and will understand the detail on the level of. Uh, detail that they'll need to provide and.
Every situation's different.
Yeah. It, it isn't, it is. Townships that have gone this route and had success hiring a third-party company and I don't, these companies uh. Understand the process and I think uh, when we.
Ah, common sense. Yeah, I agree. It's not their first rodeo.
Um. Okay, so is there any other questions? Because we're, we are having it come back in two weeks. Yes, Counselor Smith.
Uh, the uh, on uh, page thirty-two, uh, appendix H, the work plan. Um, they, uh, and elsewhere in the document, talk about providing inspection results to the owner. With our current program, one of the benefits is that the owner gets to choose the inspector. And um, and so when you're paying for the service, as happened in this case, if I select the service provider, I made a choice. There were ten or twelve people on the list. I made my choice and if I'm happy or unhappy, I get to provide feedback. Um, in this case, uh, DICER is deciding to make that decision for me. They're going to select the service provider. And um, and so in terms of the information that's collected, um. What is the process by which I, as the property owner who's going to foot this bill, get to provide some feedback on my impression? Of the quality of service provided by the contractor that you guys are selecting? Would there be a way to have um. The provider collect that feedback, that satisfaction survey, if you like, uh, from the property owners when they do the work for them?
That component hasn't been anticipated, but uh, if, if they're not happy, we'll probably.
Sorry, we'll what?
We'll probably hear about it if they're not happy.
I think it's a function. We're not really trying to make people happy. I know from the experience of the relative that had it done in Algonquin Highlands, it's just a service. It's not. Trying to make people happy. It's not, uh, and as Carl just pointed out, if there was something glaringly uh, wrong of somebody going on somebody's property, uh, we will. And, and it's been a third party hired through DICER, I'm sure we'll hear about it. For the sake of time, is there anything major, like we've been an awful long and I, I appreciate all the comments. Uh, and we've identified some very, very good things to make the changes to, but is there anything else that we? Can add or can we move on?
Well, I, I just, the final point I'm going to make again, and I've talked to some of the existing. Question providers, some of the local septic inspection providers that have been doing this for us for a couple of years now. And I haven't found one who said, who believes he can respond to this RFP successfully. They view this as being written for a big corporation. I like WSP. And therefore see us exporting uh, this work. Um, and uh, you know, when there's fifty-five hundred inspections to go, we're talking about a million dollars worth of labor. Um, important dollars in our economy that we're going to export. To a corporation, WSP has a head office in Toronto. Is that really what we want? Is that consistent with us supporting our local economy? And uh, providing uh, uh, good-paying jobs here in DICER? But, you know, everyone wants to make their own decision then.
Any one want to comment on that? I'm going to, um, so uh, we had the resolution in our package and it uh, I'd like to. Change it and I'll see if I have a mover in a second or the second part. Well, it says that we received the, in report. And further that the committee poll recommend that staff bring forward to council for final review. Is that fair? Okay, so that will be coming to our October twenty-seventh council. So Carl, the dates, uh, as I said earlier, might need to be changed and the other changes. That um, Counselor Smith suggested and the letters included in our package for the October meeting. Do I have a mover for that? Counselor Clark, a seconder? Counselor McKechnie? So I've read the resolution, all in favor? Okay, and that passed. Um, we have Robert, we hear you. Well, actually now you have to unmute, but I see you're there. So we'll quickly go over your bylaw. Uh, department report.
Can you guys hear me now?
We sure can.
Perfect, there we go. Sorry about the technical issues, everybody. Um, so I'll run over the, the report real quick for you guys. Um, can I control, there was a. A couple of calls uh, this month and a couple were resolved. Um. The uh, parking meters, we have uh, revenue. Um, as you can see, the uh, pay and display machines are revenue about. Um, nine, nine hundred forty-eight and parking meters itself are another thirty-three. Um, so I see our total there of forty-three twenty-nine. Um. Now, I just wanted to make, you know, I made a note there in the report that the, the, the meter heads. Were from a collection from when we closed them at the end of March till September. Um, so just uh, just to note that when you're looking at that, the uh, the revenue for that. Um, parking ticket uh, fines were collected at, at two hundred eighty-nine last month. Um, as again, the EOC advised to open it up at September the first. Um, parking complaints, um, I did uh, speak with a resident on the street while doing a meter run and. She did voice her opinion to me that uh, there should be no parking meters at all in, in uh, in DICER. Uh, specifically down, downtown Halliburton Village. Um, I just advised her of her option to write to council. And uh, to voice her displeasure with that. Um, the medical center gate, uh, we did have an incident with the medical center gate where somebody decided to uh, drive through the inn gate. And uh, not take a ticket and snap the arm off the, the machine. Uh, the machine didn't. Didn't uh, take any damage. It still works, it still goes up and down. I tested it a number of times out there just to make sure that it, we don't have to uh, to call anybody in and we did not have to. Um, we did have, we have a couple of spare arms laying in the Park and Rex building that was uh. We were able to replace that arm quite quickly within about a half an hour of uh, me getting out there. Um, a report was filed with the OPP just so there's something on file. And they know that it is happening. So when they take a, a drive-through, if they do see something, they can, they can give us a hand and just. And uh, talk with the owner of the vehicle. Um. No new property standards complaints were filed last month. Um, there are two that are going between, before the committee. Um. One is coming on later on this, this month. Uh, no new zoning complaints, uh, was able to close another file from April, it was off. The property is now in compliance. Uh, one encroachment complaint was filed. Um, no new noise complaints were submitted. Uh, signing and licensing, two sign permits were permitted. Uh, no new, no signage complaints were filed at all. Uh, no business licenses were filed last month. Uh, health and safety, we've gotten that uh, ball rolling again. I've taken a part one. Part one certification course, um, given now for health and safety. Um, it's a two-part process. Uh, I'll be taking part two later on this month. Uh, and a uh, joint health and safety inspection was completed by myself and Tamara. Uh, earlier in the month and no uh, major violations were found. Um. The enforcement for um, DMCPA, uh, we still haven't received any uh, calls for service for the provincial reopening Ontario Act. Uh, so no new uh, calls for service have been uh, reported. So it looks, looks good on the up and up on there. Um, is there any questions or anything, comments I can, happy to answer?
Counselor Smith?
Thanks. Quick question. Robert, uh, encroachment complaints that you deal with, would those be uh, uh, simply uh. Property, so, so somebody, uh, uh, my neighbor's building a garage and I think it's on my property. Or would you be dealing with shoreline encroachment also in terms of uh, God, there's a structure there that uh, is too close to the shore?
I would, I would deal with that as well. Um, the, the garage. Like your complaint, if your neighbor was, if you thought he was building a garage and it was over your property, that would be a zoning. Issue, n- not really a, uh, an encroachment. Uh, the encroachment is usually the. Um, somebody building something that goes on to public property. So the, the encroach on, on the municipalities.
So should dash. Just be reported to you or to Carl in the building department?
Sorry, are you froze on my screen there for a sec? Can you repeat the question?
Should uh, uh, shoreline um, building violations be reported to you or to Carl? Ready my questions?
I think that could go to both departments, to be honest. Um, I'm enforcement for, so. Um, those uh, those structured complaints can definitely come my way as well.
Okay.
But Carl's the department head, so it always would be uh, he should know, so.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, mover and seconder to receive the September by law report. Counselor Wood Roberts, Deputy Mayor Kennedy. It resulted, the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the September by law department update. All in favor? Great. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
The last thing in this department uh, report. Um. Is the uh. Tidehouse license and we all received. An email to myself and counsel and Carl. So Carl, if you could speak to that.
Yeah, I guess he. Yeah, outstanding issue on this one is the uh, difference of interpretation myself and the designer, which is um. The group E mercantile occupancy, um, agreed that. Agreed that a restaurant less than thirty people would fit into that group E mercantile. The issue is that they're not proposing a restaurant. They are, they want limited food. People are going to go there to drink, not to eat. That's that's the difference. I did actually, she indicated that they spoke with the building code advisor. So I actually called the building code advisor and asked him that specific question. And they, my conclusion was correct, that they would not be able to fit into that group E mercantile. If they were a bar or a licensed liquor establishment, not a restaurant, so. It's still an outstanding issue, which is why we can't sign off on that tight house license.
So the, just to understand, so if she just says she wants to be a restaurant with limp with under thirty seats. Then it's okay. It seems like, like I don't want to split hairs, as they say, we do want to support business. I know that they've been trying to do this for some time. So. Maybe she's not getting her information clearly. My understanding was that she, you know, she's going to have a limited menu. Well, that's still a restaurant. Is it not?
Well, no. So so what's what's the purpose? Like, again, we had that. You know, you asked the question, what are they going there for? Like, what's the main purpose? And it's not to eat, it's to drink. They have to serve food because their license requires it. They don't have a restaurant. They don't have anywhere. They're preparing food inside the building. They're they're proposing now, their their plans show limited foods, limited food service. Those types of things. So they're not proposing to be a restaurant. And that's the issue is they're proposing to be a bar, not a restaurant, so. We, it falls under an assembly occupancy, not the E mercantile occupancy. If they want to be a restaurant, that's fine. I know I was, I've I've had that conversation with them, with the owner or the. With Heather Reed several times, you know, if they want to be a restaurant, be a restaurant, but they can't. Just call themselves a restaurant and not have food service there.
Okay. But if. Like I'm, you know, we're we're trying to. Support our businesses in our community and and they've done, she's done an awful, awful lot of research and work into this. Even if it's a charcuterie plate and cold sandwiches. Is are we are we hung up on the word that she doesn't want to call herself a restaurant? Or we ask her, send a letter to say, yes, it's a restaurant, but here's my menu. I like, I I don't. I'd like to see this move forward. And so. It seems we're getting hung up on what we're eating, not. You know? So I don't know if I want to hear from anybody else. Councillor Smith?
I I think Mayor Roberts, your your sentiment is reflecting the frustration. That the the business owner feels here that the Halliburton County Brewery people. The the tide house. Permit license was introduced by the provincial government. Just a few years ago. And and when they introduced the concept. They refer to it as a restaurant within the premises of a manufacturer of. A distiller, hard liquor, winery or a brewery. And so in that sense, the tide house legislation called it a restaurant. And and everybody would agree, the primary purpose of any of these, and they're called manufacturers in that same legislation. Is to sell their alcoholic beverages. But they have a restaurant provision called a tight house. And. You know, in that same legislation, the introduction of it, the provincial government described how easy it was going to be. For these organizations to get this approved, because this was meant to help their businesses. To strengthen their position, help them employ more people and sell more liquor. And and yet, as Mayor Roberts has described, this local business. Has been struggling for more than a year, more than a year now to get this approved. You know, by our building department. They have approval from the health department for the food service. The health department, the one the organization you'd think would be primarily focused on on protecting the health of the consumers who are eating the food. They got their approval back in, I think it was October of of twenty nineteen. They've got other approvals there, including from the clerk of Dicert. Back in. October the ninth of 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 twenty nineteen. Noting that this is a wet community, they're they're allowed to, you know, do their thing there. And. You know, at your request, Carl, the the folks, I got a designer engaged, a professional designer to prepare things. You have a different perspective than the designer in terms of the of the rules here. As I understand it, you're now suggesting that they need to engage an architect to update their drawings. Is that correct?
So that that's if that's your question, that was my recommendation from the get go is that they that they. Obtain the services of an architect. They they didn't do that. They were going this route and. You know, so if they want to become the, if they want to be a licensed liquor establishment, then yes, they have to obtain the services of an architect. To design their assembly occupancy. If they want to change that use. If they want to stick to the group E mercantile, they have to be a restaurant.
Well, that's what the tight house legislation calls it. It's a restaurant.
But they're not a restaurant. So again, they define restaurant, they they they're they're they're, it's their. Regulations that define restaurant, which is. Prime, people go there for the primary service of of of. Sit down at a table. I can't remember the exact wording of it, but it's for for consumption of food. Not go there for the primary ser- service of drinking.
Now, is that definition you're pointing to in the building code?
Or in the. It's in the Liquor License Act.
The description of a tide house referred to it as a restaurant. I've gone to that, looked at that legislation and it calls it a restaurant within. The manufacturer. Premises, the manufacturer being the distiller, the winery or the brewer. They call it a restaurant.
Yeah, it permits a restaurant to have a tight house license.
So if she provides a food menu, she's can be a restaurant. To tell you the truth, I don't, I would never go out there just to drink. I know that they sell beer off the shelf. I might take some to go home as part of my, you know, tour about. Town one day or or the area and go to Abbey Gardens and go there. I I'm not, I would go there to, if I knew that they had a sandwich or something to eat. And sit and then maybe order a drink. I've had stuff to go where they do samples, just taste if they've got a different thing. I. I honestly think we're getting hung up on semantics and I know we're so close and we really want to support this. So council wants to support this, Carl, and I don't know how we just can, what she just says, I'm a restaurant.
We have plans that show a limited food service. They had actually identified that on the plan. So that's a problem. Those are things that would need to be.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Quite frankly, I'm a little disappointed that most of councils coming into this, excuse me, discussion. Without any prior knowledge of what's been going on. I would have expected a staff report that outlines some of the details here. It looks like councillor Smith's been involved for more than a year. At this point, with the limited knowledge I have, I think it's a restaurant that has three different sandwiches for sale. And I would have based on inadequate information. Which I'm again disappointed in. Either we don't discuss it and get more information, or I would suggest that we go ahead. These people have waited a year. Let's call it a restaurant and carry on.
So how can we go forward? I have the. Pardon me, the resolution is just saying to acknowledge a receipt of the letter. Does does the owner just need to say that I'm a restaurant in a letter to council?
There's no resolution here, just a letter.
Well, I have a resolution in front of me, pardon me. So I have a resolution. I'll read it first so we know it says, we resolved the committee, the whole acknowledges receiving the letter. Date of October fifth, twenty twenty from Halliburton Highlands Brewing. Regarding their change of use, building permit application, plumbing permit application and status of the tide house. License application process with the A G C O. So all it's saying is that we, the committee, the whole is just receiving things. So. That's what the resolution states. We're receiving the letter. Councillor McKechnie?
Yeah, I had a liquor license for twenty four years and. Whatever type of license you get. You got to follow the rules big time because when the inspector comes in, so if she's supposed to be serving food and she's not serving food, she's a big da da. So that's that's it to me in a nutshell. If the if the license that she's trying to. Trying to expand this area into, she's got to serve food in there. So I don't know what all this discussion is about in in regard to. Is she saying that she's not going to serve food?
No, no, she is.
Oh, absolutely. She's serving food.
So and you can you can get a license that that allows that. I I don't know. Like I say, I I had a license for twenty four years and you had to follow those guidelines right to. To a T or else you're big, they shut you down in a minute.
So Carl, are you saying that if they resubmitted their proposal and changed that out and. Indicated they do want to do a restaurant as opposed to calling it the Tito's? What do they need to do to qualify it as a restaurant? Like, do they have to have certain kitchen equipment or something in there or?
Again, they, yeah, they they can make sandwiches, right? So they can specialize in sandwiches. I, it doesn't matter to me what they have as as food. It just, we have a set of plans that says limited food service. Right there, it changes the classification from a restaurant. Into a lic- licensed liquor establishment. That completely changes the assembly of the or the occupancy of the building. And and that's that's basically the the major hurdle right there.
And Carl, that's where I think we're getting hung up on semantics. When she said limited food service, it is because she isn't going to have thirty things on her menu. She's not having french fries. She's not having those things. And I I really think that. You know, she she described some of the things would be cold sandwiches and charcuterie trays and. You know, cheese platter, that sort of thing. That's that's a menu. That's that's. So I I think you've got the will of council and I think the intent is there to, it's not a bar. People don't go there. They don't go, let's go to Highlands Brewery and drink. They they will get people there to go out for lunch. Or in late afternoon and combine and and eat. So.
Would they resubmit those with that information clarified for Carl to review that? That's what I'm asking.
Carl?
Yeah, I mean, they could they could always submit that revision. I mean, that's been the 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 issue from the get go. Again, the building code is very specific when it talks about. It explains very, you know, it's in in a locations about limited food service, primarily. Licensed liquor establishment. It it differentiates, differentiates between a restaurant and licensed liquor establishment and. I I think that's where, if there was ever an issue. Come back to. To bite the municipality, that we approved something that shouldn't have been approved because of. Of that, you know?
Okay, so the resolution just reads to receive. Maybe I can contact the owner and. Share with her what we're expecting and that can come back very quickly in the next couple of days. It can come back to our council meeting. Is that okay? For clarification, to take away the limited food service to class by yourself as a restaurant with limited seating. So then she fits under group E mercantile. Okay, so I need a mover and second or just councillor Smith?
I'm happy to move that. I just wanted to ask Carl one more question.
Sure.
Are we are we talking about the need for some physical modifications to their relatively new building? Or is this just a, you know, I'll call a paperwork matter?
So again, depends on what they want to be. So if they want to be the restaurant, then no, there doesn't have to be a lot of changes to that building. They want to become an assembly occupancy, then yeah, change is required.
Okay, so I did have moved by councillor Smith, go have a seconder. Councillor Clark? I did read the resolution. Does anyone require me to read it again? All in favor? And that's carried. Carl, before I'm in touch with the owner, I will just touch base with you so the wording is exactly clear. I really thought I could plow through and finish the agenda today, but I need a quick break. I'm wearing an old pair of glasses. Mine broke on the weekend and I need ten minutes. So I'm sorry, we're going to have to take a quick recess for ten minutes and we'll be right back. Okay? Thank you. Okay, so we are back in session and thanks, everybody. I hope you're able to stretch your legs. Ten minute break there and sorry, Barbara, to make you wait to the end of the meeting, but anyway, we'll go and start through with finance. And your first report, which is the revenue and expenditure report.
Yes, so we have here the financial results as of September thirtieth. Just finishing up the second or the third quarter of twenty twenty. We've seen in September, under the parks and wrecks, that we did take delivery of the new pickup truck. So that's one notable item for September. Construction projects are wrapping up for the year under the transportation. Outside of that, pretty much trending on budget.
Okay, that's good news. Any questions on that? Motion to receive. Moved by councillor Smith, taken by councillor Wood Roberts. We resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the revenue and expenditure report at September thirtieth, twenty twenty. With the twenty twenty forecast analysis, all in favor?
Ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I I put you as the moving of that motion.
I'm happy to do that, too. But I just wanted to to get an update on the input center. It it currently is projecting to be twenty six thousand dollars over budget. And and I was curious if we. Deputy Mayor Kennedy may have an update on that.
I just touched base with the our project manager this morning about that. They're expecting to start framing this week. That's the anticipated time, but no update as far as finances go. Materials are supposed to be delivered Wednesday or Thursday. But I haven't seen any up to date financial update. Updates as far as what's worked. Uh, but I haven't seen any up to date financial update, uh, updates as far as what's worked and completed so far. Tamara may have a little more information.
Uh, noth- nothing concrete. Uh, Barbara just submitted the quarterly report um. For the funding on that. Um, so we're on track that way. Uh, we won't have the final numbers, but now we're still having invoices coming in.
So in light of that.
A lot of money was pre-spent back in the spring, like the, a lot of the, we booked and paid for a lot of the materials, the roof trusses. A number of those things were paid for because they had to be submitted by the end of March, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong on that date, but there was a certain. Um, materials had to be paid for upfront in order to make sure that we're compliant with our grant. So some of those costs were fixed and have already been dealt with. So hopefully the surprises are minimal. Um, I think everything went well with the construction so far. I haven't heard of, I didn't get any phone calls. Let's put it that way, that they'd hit uh. Gold or paint dirt or a vacuum down below. Uh, everything's, they're just waiting for the things to cure. And as I say, they're starting the framing now. The timber frame portion is complete, so that's apparently on budget. So. I haven't heard any surprises, John. I, I can't give you any more information right now, but we're trying to stay on top of it. Contractor timing is, is problem. I just, I said to Spencer this morning, uh, middle of October, it'd be nice to see some wood going vertical at some point before they get snow on it, but uh. That's a contractor problem. And as you know, I think they're trying to close in a million things around the pro- round DIZART here to this right now. So anyways.
You go ahead, Barbara.
Okay, and, and just uh for council, uh, at the end of September, um, to date, we've spent a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on the information center so far.
And so Barbara, for when we come to year end and for whatever overages, because we didn't include those in our twenty twenty budget. Um, we can have discussion on uh how those get expensed, whether we pull from development reserve or if we were able to achieve savings in other areas. Uh, so it doesn't impact the budget. That'll be for a discussion um as we review our year end. Would that be fair to say?
Correct.
So that we may have had some savings in other departments that we can pull from that. So there's no impact or we can pull from the development reserve uh to, to uh. To do the difference. Okay, so I did get the mover second or and I read the resolution, so um I will just ask for the vote then. All in favor? Carried, thank you. Um, the meter sewage reports included.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're still trending uh like fifteen percent down over last year and uh again. Um, just with what we're dealing with COVID and so forth. Uh, so I don't anticipate um. That there's going to be uh too much of a gain. There may be some now with the uh schools up and running, but that's always a moving target as well.
Uh, Deputy Kennedy?
Yeah, our, the short, expected shortfall, so they'd be covered by our COVID funding. Eligible, I guess, for that is a better way of putting it.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to check that because that's more a revenue indicator. So it's um, yeah, it, I'd have to look into that piece.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, we, because that's fairly strict and there's still some uncertainty in that, but I believe loss of revenue that can be directly related to COVID nineteen was um qualified, but uh. For that type of expense. Like a loss of revenue, you could use the money that we received from the province. So we'll, we'll get clarification as we get closer to year end. Uh, motion to receive. Uh, Counselor Smith, question?
Uh, happy to move the motion to receive, but also I question uh Barbara, extended care. Um, seems to be all over the map in terms of uh, of their volumes. And uh, you know, uh, the good news is their average is a little higher this year, but um. It could go from forty one or forty two thousand in one month and a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy three thousand actually for the month of September. I would have thought it would be at a, a facility that would be, you know, relatively constant. Um, there were small variances in uh twenty nineteen, but nothing like this year.
Yeah, so I also understand that they have a very unique system in terms of their water system there. Um, and uh. The other piece is again, uh, usage. Uh, um, you know, you'd have to look at the activity that's happening at the facility there. Um, and again, uh, with all metered users, uh, we're looking at the actual meters themselves to make sure that they're functioning and uh potential replacement down the road.
Okay, question answered. A, a second for the motion? Seconder? I know we're getting tired. Hands up. Okay, I saw Counselor Clark. Uh, be resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges received the September twenty twenty metered sewage reading report. All in favor? That's carried. Uh, the letter from the Halberton Highlands Chamber of Commerce. Want to comment on that?
Yeah, so um, this here is an opportunity to uh review the procurement process uh to include uh social procurement. Um, and so social procurement, procurement uh includes uh five types of uh community capital in the procurement decision and so it encapsulates. Economic capital, human capital, social capital, cultural and physical capital.
Okay, so uh Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go ahead.
Yeah, we had um Jennifer and Andrea from the chamber attend our last recovery meeting and went through this uh. Uh, in a fair amount of detail as well as the proclamation, they'd like to see um this fall for a buy close by program. My understanding is they are going to attend uh our, into the, our regular council meeting to speak further to uh. Uh, the initiative of a, a Christmas or holiday kind of an um way of doing a promotion. As far as the social, this um, the social uh purchasing, I think we're, we run up against some things with international law. But we do the best we can. I think uh Welcome Center is a great example of that where we, we're the general manager and our project manager. So we were able to control. And uh entice local contractors to, to bid on the work rather than going um as far as the lowest tender. So I think we are making some positive strides forward. Uh, look forward to seeing what comes out of this a hundred thousand dollar uh research. They, they have hired a consultant to, to come up with. We don't have those kinds of funds, so. I think at this point I would uh, I'm not sure what Menden Hills, what they include in their pro- in their proclamation, but uh. That's a bit of an update on it anyways.
Yeah, that was one of my, my uh queries as to uh what, what Menden did. Um, Tamara, go ahead.
Um, every time anything changes with this, like probably ten, fifteen years ago, it all tightened up. Um, but typically like organizations like MFOA or AMCTO. Will work with municipal treasurers and clerks to roll out education and information around these things, opportunities. So if this is happening elsewhere, like Peterborough and Edmonton and other places are looking at it, I suspect it will become a topic of conversation more broadly. And all the local municipalities are getting a copy of this letter, not just DIZART. So. I, I would think that it's probably something that the local treasurers will discuss amongst themselves, if not through one of the municipal admin meetings. To see if there's any opportunities, but it's definitely something broader than DIZART or even just Halberton. It's. Probably something that we can get a lot more information and support from on a broader level.
Okay, so right now the motion is just to receive and so that uh through um. Uh, yourselves, either CEOs or treasurers, maybe uh we can have this and, and uh Deputy Mayor Kennedy, you said that they're coming as a delegation? Maybe we'll have more information.
My understanding, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not aware. Mallory's nodding. Yeah, so, so right now it's just letter to receive. We're not uh doing anything. We'll have a further time to um have discussion on that. Okay, so motion to receive. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor McKechnie. Be resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges received the letter from the Halberton Highlands Chamber of Commerce regarding sustain- sustainable procurement. All in favor? And that's carried. And the KNU FM lease agreement?
Yes, so the current agreement uh expires in uh twenty twenty one, January thirty first, so the tenant is looking to renew the lease for another five year term. And uh, so the proposed lease here does include a two percent increase year over year. And that's based on the CPI average increase over the last five years being twenty sixteen to twenty twenty.
Okay, and that's something that we said we would put forward is that we wouldn't have fixed, we'd have them um rents go on a go-forward basis, so the increase. So any comment on that? No, I didn't win the five thousand dollars. I guess none of you did either yesterday, so that's too bad, but they did a great job. I did go and buy a very nice shirt as well, when in person. Okay, I need a mover and a second or. Uh, Counselor Wood Roberts, Counselor Smith. Be resolved that committee of the whole acknowledges received the lease agreement renewal with the Halberton County Community Radio Association for a five-year period and that the committee of the whole recommends that a bylaw to authorize the execution of the lease agreement be brought forward to the October twenty seventh regular meeting of council for adoption. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. And lastly. Uh. Benefits of bids and tenders.
I can speak to that.
Great.
As part of the service delivery review, uh, it was mentioned about um doing more online uh bidding and so forth with the roads department in particular. Um, so staff have been looking at the, the bids and tenders uh platform for a number of months now in conjunction with the new website development. Bids and tenders is, if you're fit, uh, familiar with uh the Dingo or anything like that, it's very similar. Um, what it does is um moves all our bidding to an online platform. Um, it's a, a personalized uh website for DIZART. And it puts everything there, including the results and the evaluation outcomes. And, and if there are any addendums done through the process, they're there and people are automatically notified. It takes away the uh human errors in terms of people not submitting all their required documents and the den or appendices with the. Documentation because they can't go on to the next level until they've clicked all the boxes and uploaded the right documents. It provides us templates, um, online tracking of our, our projects that are in there. Um, contract management, it's easy, it's good for the auditors in terms of they can see that we've been following our procurement and everything is very accountable and transparent to the public. It gives us uh reporting so that we can actually do some analysis within the uh tool to help produce, produce reports for council to justify expenditures. And basically uh gives us full compliance with accessibility and security. And uh, right now there are three hundred and fifty buyer organizations currently enrolled with bids and tenders in Canada. A lot of municipalities, the second page you'll see there is a list of municipalities within three hours of us who are currently using this platform. Um, Rob and Barbara and John and Andrea and I have been involved with training for the last few months and. We're ready to do our first bid, um, which will be the uh RFP for the Septic Gray inspection. So that if we're successful in getting this all completed and set up on time, we'll be doing that all online. So we'll be able to direct everyone. It'll be the most. Transparent you can imagine. And I think it's a good thing overall. We just wanted to introduce it to you. Um, there is a cost for, there, there's two options. Um, companies like, say, companies like Miller. Like big companies, they, they pay in and have an account with bids and tenders so that they can go in and get bid documents under their annual fee. And it doesn't cost them anything. Smaller companies that don't have that annual subscription can pay, it's about fifty dollars a bid. And you can preview the bids for free and look at all the documents and everything. You just can't submit until you pay the amount. So. There's not really any risk to anyone. And as Rob noted, we don't generally put out that kind of project done to a tender RFP unless it's over twenty five thousand anyway, so. The fifty dollars shouldn't be too much of an impediment. And like we said, a lot of the companies that we deal with on the bigger projects are already signed up, so it shouldn't be a barrier to them at all either. Are there any questions? Barbara might be able to fill in where I've got.
Any questions for either of them? Just for clarification, when she said Andrea, it wasn't me.
No, Andrew Mueller, sorry.
Stop. I have nothing to do with this. I'm not bidding on it.
No.
Um, so yeah, that was a, you know, like you said, the, the cost to the um people of bidding is either a flat rate, so, so it's a flat rate once a year cost for the larger companies out there like the Fowlers and Millers and that type of thing. And for uh smaller companies, uh, it is a fifty dollar per bid, but we wouldn't use this unless it was a larger tender, so. Any questions? Not motion to receive? Uh, Counselor Clark and Counselor Donaldson? Be resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the summary page outlining the benefits of the bids and tenders procurement platform. Uh, so we're just acknowledging the receipt. So uh, to the clerk, would this come back that we are adopting this or how's that? Right of the bids and tenders platform? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, so I read the resolution. All in favor? Okay. Because it does, sometimes the uh motions, as we're doing them in committee of the whole, will say and recommends to counsel that, but we didn't put that in there, so we'll.
I believe we're going forward with it already, aren't we, Tamara?
Yeah.
We're not looking for approval. We're just letting you guys know that it's happening. Yeah.
Okay, all right, well. Thank you, just for clarification for myself. Well, I'm very excited because uh the next resolution is a motion to adjourn. So unless there's a mo- notice of motion, Counselor Smith?
Just a, a question. Uh. Um, our September meeting, uh, is the minutes of that meeting show uh. Under the title Notice of Motion, um, there's three or four different topics there. And uh, four, I guess, altogether, uh, Waste Management, Infrastructure Projects, Housing and Business Development Committee and Local Climate Change Actions. Um, so what is happening with those? Um, I'll use the first one as example under Waste Management. I'd ask for staff to bring forward options for better managing our waste. Uh, including uh organic waste management. Um. And uh, you know, Deputy Mayor Kennedy had a topic related to uh infrastructure. And uh, and on it goes. So what is the process for those to get addressed?
I'll leave it to stop if they want to answer that. Tamara first?
I, I, I think at the time that some of those things came up at our first meeting was before we had our service delivery review presentation and a number of those items were coming out of that. I know for sure the waste management was one. Um, and at this point, um, that report is being uh updated um based on comments that were made at the last meeting and we brought forward to council. Um, for this next meeting coming up. Um, on each of them, I think it's, nothing's going to happen overnight. I just, because it came up at that meeting in September, we won't be ready. Like it needs to be part of an overall work. And we talked about developing a strategic plan for DIZART. I think all of those would be part of that. Um. We really need to have that plan to create that. Vision of how to move things forward. So it's not just everything coming up as a notice of motion every meeting, right?
Okay, I, I just uh, you know, there's uh, there's a lot of topics under these four categories here. But I'll use uh, you know, organic waste management as an example. There's a, a tremendous feeling in our community. That we should be doing something with respect to better managing organic, well, managing it. We don't manage it today. It just gets dropped off and it's in the landfill and it's garbage. How do we get something moving on a topic like that? Um, to uh, to, to get a report as we ask here, right? What are our alternatives? What are the possibilities uh that could be pursued? Um, what, you know, what does council need to do uh to have um, you know, some focus on organic waste management and um, and a, and a review of the alternatives and. Potential steps we could take to, to address that.
So for instance, at the end of the September meeting, uh, you know, our John Smith, uh, your John Smith, John. Uh, Watson may not have been still involved in the meeting or anything. So how, what's the process that if that becomes a notice of motion that it goes back to staff? So Mallory, I'm gonna ask you that, like, how does, how does staff?
I make staff aware when they've had a notice of motion that comes across their desk. So I think. So I think with, with regards to organic waste in general or any of the waste topics. We have a waste strategy that was kind of tied into that service delivery review. And I believe John has a plan to present it to council and it's, and it's full scale because we kind of got the coal's notes of it and the other one, and it will go by landfill to landfill. If it's a council's will to discuss what we can do about organic waste in depth, then I would suggest a notice of motion where everyone votes on it. As bringing it forward and asking a member of staff to bring in a detailed report on what we can do about organic waste. In our last meeting, we kind of mentioned things that we all wanted to bring forward. But when you're, when you're delegating staff time to a project like that, it's probably better that everyone votes on it to make sure that we're, that's what we want staff to focus on right now. So, but I will say in terms of waste management, there is a waste strategy coming forward.
Okay, so maybe that's a, maybe like Mallory said, all staff were informed of these. And maybe we just give them some time to catch up. And we are just, this is only the second meeting of our committee, the whole to try to get.
Well, I, I'd be, you know, happy, thrilled to get a report on this topic of organic waste. And if it takes a motion here, a notice of motion, you know, to, to make that higher on John's priority list. And in fact, maybe make it the top of his priority list to, to have him report to, you know, the November committee of the whole meeting on the alternatives that are available to the municipality of Diesart to better handle organic waste. There's no magic solution here, but we might have been able to do something beyond having people drop off a truckload of organic waste and it just gets treated like garbage. It's a waste. It's a shame.
Tamara?
I was just gonna say, I would think that's part of the overall strategy and I would maybe let him roll that out as he sees fit, as he's prepared with the pieces. I think he understands that the organics are of interest to council.
Yes, we're limited by our certificate of approval, so that's part of the issue as it stands. So is there a formal notice of motion by, with a mover and a seconder and an actual, like before we brought up some topics, but no, seeing none, then I will ask for a mover and seconder to adjourn today's meeting. Councillor Donaldson and councillor Wood Roberts. We resolved that the committee, the whole adjourned its meeting held on October 13th, 2020 at 1:36 PM. All in favor? That is carried and thank you, everybody. Have a good day. See you at council meeting if not before.